She thought 10,000, but it'll just be what's needed. Hopefully it'll be more like five, but that's all I have. This vote has to be in front of the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, and the Finance Committee has already voted yes.
Okay, can I have a motion, please? To increase the spending limit of the Board of Health, Chapter 53 E and a half revolving funds by 10,000.
I move that the Board of Health be approved to increase their spending limit not to exceed $10,000.
Reagan?
Any discussion? All right, so roll call vote. And Ethan is not with us, so we start with the... Well, we always start.
Arnold, I.
Hello, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Thank you very much, Priscilla.
Thank you. Now I'll go for dinner.
Good, okay. All right, Deer Hunting Program public hearing. Since I want to have a hard stop on this at nine, I hope people will let me start a little early to make sure that I have enough time for everything. I do have a statement I would like to make before we even get begin on this. Excuse me. Tonight, because tonight we're going to be accepting both public input and information that we requested from various town and state entities. I want to remind everyone that this is not a town meeting at which everyone will have a vote. It's a selectman's meeting, and it's a selectman who will be having a discussion and taking the vote. And this is in accordance with a recent town meeting vote that affirmed that the decision to have hunting on public lands was to be in the hands of the selectmen. The Board of Selectmen have read many letters this week and last that we've received in the past few days in regards to expanding the deer hunt in Carlisle. And we've received letters from the following people in alphabetical order. Would everybody please mute themselves or somebody that's in the background that is interfering? So these are the people we received letters from the past couple of weeks. Donald Allen, John Bakewell, Allison Becker, Dana Booth, Kimberly Boshi. And please forgive me if I mispronounce your names. I'll do the best I can. Debbie and Chip Dewing, Frank Dollis, Greg Fairbank, Bridget Ferrari, Denerson Fresson, David Friedman, Jeannie Genesco, Judy Hodges, Steve Luttrell, Elizabeth Luttrell, Beth Maloney, Luisa Nazaro, Naomi Oreskes, Nancy Perrin-Wise, Claudio Rebby, Camilia Roska, Susan Stengrovich, and Robert West. Before we begin the public input, I want to lay down some guidelines for how we will receive it. We're going to devote up to 30 minutes for input from people who have concerns about deer hunting, and then up to 30 minutes for those with concerns about conservation issues and deer overpopulation, after which we'll invite the Land Stewardship Committee, CONSCOM, Trails, and the Deer Control Committee to make their reports. And since we've already read and all the received information from some of you, we need to make time for others who may wish to add something new. So I will recognize speakers first who have not written to us prior to this meeting. If there remains time within the 30-minute time slot, I will then allow others to make briefly and add new information, a brief comment or add new information. In this way, the selectmen can gather the maximum information needed to make this decision. If you have not written and you want to present your concerns about the deer hunt, we're going to, you know, have you select the Meeting Participant button at the bottom of your screen, push the Raise Hand button at the bottom of the participant list, and that will allow me to set the individual time limits to be able to hear as many individuals as possible in the allotted 30 minutes. So I'm going to ask for that in a minute. And if you've not written and you want... Okay, well, we can do that right now, actually. If you have not written and if you would like to add some comments or additional information or just give us your opinions, feelings, and concerns, please raise your hand so I can see how many there are in the audience that would like to give us input at this point. And maybe my board members will help me check.
I see Christina C. and Mike Hanauer have their hands up. And that's all I see on my scrolling through the participants.
And Jeannie Genesco just also raised her hand.
Well, Jenny has written to us.
Yep.
All right. What I'm going to do is allow Christina C. and Mike Hanauer each three minutes to present what they would like. And then we can have maybe 90 seconds apiece of four or a little less for the people that have already written. So I'd like to recognize...
Kate, do you want to say something about the timing?
I had, I think I did, 30-minute slot for those people who have concerns about deer hunting.
Yeah, but do you want me to keep time or...
Yes, sorry, Barney.
Okay.
Sorry, Barney, forgot that. Barney will be our timekeeper.
I'm just using my phone, and it's set for 2 minutes and 50 seconds. And when it goes off, you'll know you need to wrap up.
Yeah, okay. Because there are so many of you who want to speak. I'm just trying to make it so that everybody has a chance to be heard. I'm not trying to be... I want you to feel listened to, but we have to not go until all hours of the night because that makes us kind of stupid at the end. So I'm going to recognize Christina C.
Hi, thank you. I know time is limited, so I've got some questions, and I'll just ask them all at once. Has the total cost of the pilot program so far been determined? If so, can that information be made available? Is there an actual budget for the 2020 proposed expanded hunt? Or will the cost continue to be absorbed by other departmental budgets? Is it not usual to accept a proposed program after a realistic budget is submitted for that program? During one of the May BOS meetings, I think it was the 19th, please correct me if I'm wrong, there was mention of a fire department hosted dinner after town meeting. Concern was raised by one selectman about the perception of a town irresponsibly supporting lack of social distancing in relation to that event. So what will the perception be of the BOS if there is even less town land available in 2020 for the safe use by all Carlisle residents? What will the perception of the BOS be during these uncertain COVID-19 times of serious fiscal belt tightening and fiscal uncertainty if funds continue to be pumped into the failed special interest pilot program instead of applying to the welfare and well-being of Carlisle residents? In this instance, are priorities not misplaced? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Way under your three-minute time, so I appreciate it. Mike Hanauer, I'd like to recognize you. And I can, I think I, no, I can't unmute.
Yep.
Yeah, there you are.
Thank you. I too, I think, will be well under three minutes. It's time to put people in nature ahead of hunters, especially important now with coronavirus and the many, many more people that want to use the woods and appreciate nature. It just seems to me that academia has adequately and credibly quashed all the excuses that we need a deer hunt. Let's give Carlisle Conservation Lands back to Carlisle. In addition, I'd like to mention I did send a letter, and my name was not mentioned, Kate, in your list.
I wonder if... Okay. Thank you. I thought I got everybody. I went through all my emails and my list, and I'm sorry if I missed your letter.
Well, I would like to be sure that the board and others have that letter and have had an opportunity to read it.
I have read it.
I have read it.
Okay, you know, I must have read it too because I read all of them as they came in. I went back tonight through all my emails, and I'm sorry, I might have just missed yours when I went back through it, Mike. Okay? All right. So that gives us some time. I can give some time to those people who have written to us who would like, I would prefer, if you could...
Kate, you've got Carrie Patel, who I don't think has written to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And Lisa Moses.
I guess they're not coming up forward. All right, Carrie?
Hi. I don't have a lot to say. I just wanted to say that I am here to, I am in opposition of expanding the deer hunt. Thank you.
Thank you. And somebody...
Lisa Moses.
And Camilia Roska. I see. Okay. So Lisa, I'm sorry, did you... She must be...
Hello.
Lisa, we'll start with you.
Thank you. It sounds like you did not receive my letter as well. So I have a quick statement, if that's okay.
Sure.
I've been following this debate closely in my only one year of residence here in Carlisle, and I wanted to share some concerns about the current policy and the proposed expansion. One facet of the disagreement over the hunt policy, I think, is about good governance. And I've seen a number of places along the way where it seems like decisions have been made and reasons have been given that cause me some concern about transparency and about motive. For example, it seems like multiple citizens have expressed discomfort about using the trails at the same time as hunters. And it seems like the concerns have been largely dismissed and judged as trivial, which I don't think does much to ease worried residents. And I wondered why that wasn't deemed more important. Similarly, legitimate concerns from scientists like me about the quality of the evidence used to justify the hunt at all have been rejected as expensive or unnecessary. And to me, the call to define why our town should cede use of our conservation land to hunters remains really unanswered from a scientific perspective. I haven't seen any local data attesting to deer overpopulation. I've seen even less evidence that deer are damaging our conservation lands. And I know from my background that multiple research studies have shown that bow hunting is not an effective method of deer population control. So I'm really baffled as to how we justify doing this. I hear what sound like fairly thin arguments to me about why the hunt should continue and be expanded. But I'm really left to wonder why there is such much support for it. So I would like to hear a little bit more about that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Let me see, Naomi. Camilia Roska?
Hi, I did write.
Oh, you did, you wrote too. Okay, but you can give us a...
Just briefly, so I wrote in opposition because my friends and neighbors have made science-based arguments and data-based arguments against deer hunting. And so I, and so did the previous speakers. And so I would like to urge the Board of Selectmen to make database statements as well and make the decision based on science. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Naomi Oreskes, I know you wrote. I can unmute, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I did write, but my prepared statement was non-included in my very brief email that I sent, and it's specifically about the issue of science. I think some of you know that I'm a professor at Harvard, and I teach the history of science. And I wish to argue that the argument that's being made here in favor of an expanded hunt is based on a purported scientific claim that does not stand up to scrutiny. The claim is that the expanded hunt would have a beneficial ecological effect. But in their letter, the Conservation Commission acknowledges that there are no site-specific studies that support the claim that either the existing hunt or an expanded one will provide ecological benefit to town lands. Yet, the Commission makes the astonishing claim that, quote, "regional data and almost universally accepted scientific studies support efforts to keep the deer population in Carlisle in control by hunting." As a professional historian of science, I can tell you that universally accepted scientific studies are extremely rare, and no evidence has been offered to support the claim that this is one of those rare cases. As for regional data, the evidence offered actually refutes the claim that this will be ecologically beneficial. As the Conservation Commission notes in its letter, Carlisle is a mass wildlife zone 10 with deer population densities ranging between 30 and 60 per square mile. The CONSCOM states that in a presentation, mass wildlife recommended a range of 12 to 18 deer per square mile. However, in footnote three of their letter, they state that the published goal for Zone 10 is in fact 6 to 8 deer. Carlisle is a town of 30 square miles. This means that to control the deer population to a level that would beneficially affect the forests based on published state recommendations, we would need to kill something like 1,000 deer. If we did that for three years, that means we would have to kill more than 300 animals each year. Before the opening of town lands to hunting, it was estimated that hunters took about 25 deer per year. With town lands open, we increased that number to 30. In other words, we took about five extra deer. If we double the length of the hunting season and double available land, we might take another 20. You see the point. 50 years from now, we might have taken 1,000 deer. Meanwhile, the deer will, of course, have reproduced, which raises another point. If our goal is to control the deer population, the hunting must necessarily focus on does. And yet, the proposal before us does not do this. The claim is made that if the hunt is expanded as proposed, then, quote, "there will be a greater chance that the deer population will be reduced to come in line with target populations." This claim simply does not stand up to scientific scrutiny. Quantitative analysis indicates the proposed expanded hunt cannot reduce the deer population in an ecologically meaningful way. The numbers simply do not add up.
10 seconds. Therefore, time is perfect. I urge you not to support the proposal for an expanded hunt insofar as the claim of a scientific justification is fundamentally unsupported. Thank you. Thank you very much. Jeannie Genesco, I see your hand up. Jeannie, she's muted, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute myself, and I forgot how. Okay, I'm going to give a little bit different history, so please bear with me. It actually comes to a meaningful conclusion or a meaningful statement. In July of 2017, Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker appointed Ron Amadon to head the State's Department of Fish and Game. That's mass wildlife. Mr. Amadon was then serving as a gun lobbyist and the president of GOAL, G-O-A-L, the Gun Owners Action League, which is the NRA affiliate in Massachusetts. At the time, Democratic Senator Ann Goby of Spencer expressed admiration for Mr. Amadon's, quote, "reasoned and ethical approach to dealing with issues," unquote. The organization GOAL became prominent on the mass wildlife site until a successful petition forced mentions of GOAL removed. GOAL pushes aggressively for NRA-style legislation, such as repealing Massachusetts ban on assault weapons, and was suing Massachusetts Attorney General Healy's office over its attempts to ban copycat versions of assault weapons when Mr. Amadon was appointed. Needless to say, GOAL also lobbies aggressively to change the state's fish and wildlife laws, like rolling back many of the provisions of the 1996-2000 Wildlife Protection Act. In Amadon's first year as head of mass wildlife, legislation was introduced that would allow hunting on Sunday, use of a crossbow, bear bait hunting, mass wildlife management of the beaver population, and mass wildlife management of the moose population. Senator Goby was a sponsor in at least some of this legislation. Mass wildlife is very aggressive right now with the deer hunting. Separately and locally in Carlisle, and I will give you an interaction I had with mass wildlife supervisor, I took the opportunity of attending a Carlisle Conservation Coffee in February 2020. The guest speaker was Mass Wildlife's Pat Huckery, district supervisor, Northeast Director Office in Air. She was personable, polite, very likable, and informative when she spoke and included a question and answer. After the session was over and people were leaving, we had a constructive conversation sitting at a large wooden table in Town Hall. I offered the question of why the state should be allowing the hunting of fox since the fox is probably the primary predator of the mouse, infamous in its world as an excellent reservoir for the Lyme bacterium and host of many a black-legged tick. She appreciatively took the related technical paper I offered, but dismissed the worthiness of not hunting fox in order to ameliorate Lyme disease prevalence. Our conversation diverged from the fox hunting, and without me asking, she offered that mass wildlife's goal was to expand the recreational hunting of deer. Surprised, I asked, "What about protecting understory?" She hesitated, and then she replied, as an afterthought, "Yes, that too." This firsthand experience I had with Ms. Huckery illuminates the push by mass wildlife to bow hunt deer is to expand recreational hunting and not to protect understory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeannie. There is somebody that's labeled Gateway. Could you give us your name and address, please? Or just at least your name to know who we're talking to or who we're listening to?
It might be me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I had difficulty getting on Zoom, but this is Frank Dollis in Brook Street, and just wanted to thank everybody for attending today. And I'll be very brief. I don't want to be redundant with everybody else in less than a minute. Been a Carlisle resident for 27 years, and I walk the trails on... Each one of the trails on different parts of town, especially Greeno, at least five to seven times per week. Very disconcerting, not, again, to be redundant, but the transparency of how the whole process evolved. From a practical standpoint, we're talking cost and benefit. We're talking the best time of year for hiking and walking in the woods. And certainly, as other folks have mentioned, the time of year, as people are getting out more and more, I suspect that things will continue. It's very disturbing to be walking that time of year when there's no mosquitoes, no bugs, the best time of year to walk, cool weather, to feel like there's cameras in the trees. Where are the bow hunters? When is the hunt? We all pay a significant amount to live here. Those trails are free and open to everyone. And if people are uncomfortable with... I think there's a large group of people that are very uncomfortable with the idea of walking the trails while there's bow hunting going on. As a practical matter, we're a small town very close to the Greater Boston area. The idea to me of walking that time of year, I personally was very livery about doing it and pulled back significantly. As others mentioned, the science is not there. As a matter of fact, the science goes against it. The idea of expanding it is contrary to what I think we should be doing. I think we should be absolutely pulling back and not doing it. I don't see any advantage to it. As a practical matter, again, I've had Lyme disease. I know what it's about. If this were something that were medical, the CDC was saying, hey, we got to do it. You know, there's some spraying going on, whatever. But this is, this is just really an infringement on our rights to be able to walk the property of Carlisle. And I thank everybody else for their very thorough and prepared discussion. I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you very much. I see a chat from Bridget's iPhone. Would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you so much for allowing me an extra minute to add into the note that I sent in. What I wanted to mention is the conversation is, you know, in listening to all the speakers, I appreciate the data and fact-based analysis that have been provided. My observation is that in the last number, you know, speakers that have presented their opinion, there's not been presentations from families with children that are using the trails on a regular basis. And I wanted to reemphasize, I have four small, well, not so small anymore, but still young children, elementary and grades and middle school. We use the trails regularly. And one of my burning concerns is that during hunting season, I'm afraid to have my kids on the trails because I do not know who's around and what is happening. And I think that that is one of the critical drawbacks of allowing deer hunting on the public land is that we just, we have no idea who's around. And so it's not, I, as a parent, don't feel responsible or safe to bring my children onto the trails. And then, so we lose really the benefit of the trails. And that's one of the draws to Carlisle is the beautiful surroundings. And my children love being out in nature and looking around and having this gorgeous land and beautiful nature to observe and to... Especially in quarantine, it's been a wonderful source of scientific observation, for lack of any type of scientific observation that we're doing in our own home. So I wanted to just, I guess, provide additional insight for parents of children, the children in the school, that this is a real concern. And I do not use the trails with my children during hunting season. And I am not unusual. I know that that is a common concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see Don Allen. I'll mute you.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'd just like to say, as you've observed, I've written, I've written to you. I've written to you multiple times. And so I don't want to, I don't want to be redundant. I just wanted to mention, we did have a petition on change.org, and the latest results are that we have 227 Carlisle signatures opposed to the hunt. I'd like to, standard engineering practice. And I'm trained as a scientist, but my career was as an engineer. Standard engineering practice is you identify... If a problem is presented to you, you establish that the problem really is truly an issue. And you do that definitively before you start, you know, expending resources of various kinds on solving the problem. Once you've done that, then you adopt a solution that has a high probability of working. And in this case, bow hunting, as has been observed by others, there have been statements by many people, I keep quoting Alan Lippert, but he's one of the preeminent experts on deer population control. And he told us in Carlisle at the, in his talk at the Unitarian Church, at the First Religious Society, that bow hunting will not solve serious deer problems, that bow hunting, that archery hunts on conservation land in suburbia are recreational. And then the last thing we do as standard engineering practice when we, when we, when we go at a problem like this is we always have metrics so that we know whether what we're doing is solving the problem we're trying to solve. And then this is kind of a negative feedback loop. And so what you get is a self-correcting system. In this, in the process thus far, we don't have, we don't have that. If you, if you decide, despite, despite all this, if you decide to expand the hunt and you succeed in killing two times or three times as many deer as you've so far succeeded in killing, which would be either based on last year's numbers, let's use the average number for 2018 and 2019, which is eight. So supposedly, you succeed in killing, you know, 16 or 24 deer next year. How do you know whether you've done any good? How do you know that this is not the difference between throwing one glass of water or two or three glasses of water on a raging house fire? You do not have metrics built into this process that allow you to evaluate the success or failure or the efficacy of what you've done. I think I've had my say. I don't want to take up too much time so other people can speak. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this point who have concerns about the deer hunt? David Friedman.
Hi, thanks. I think, I understand the difficulty of your position Um, I, I think, um, I understand the, the difficulty of your position as the selectman where you've got input from the conservation organizations or, or parts of town government from conscom and the land stewards and then the regional Metro West collaborator.
But I can't.
Okay, so change your video.
I, I can't do anything. Sorry.
Okay, I'm going to mute you. Okay.
All right. Basically telling you that, you know, they're in favor of doing this. Um, and, and, you know, I did not include mass wildlife in that because I think, um, as others have said, um, there's somewhat suspect of a, the conservation organization.
Right here. Sorry, excuse us, we're having, we're having a Zoom issue here. Barney, I think what you have to do is leave the meeting and re-sign in, maybe? Okay. She seems to be.
I'll try again.
Hi, sorry.
In, in, and I had, um, heard that, you know, Conservation Commission sort of felt like it was not in their purview to, um, make specific recommendations about the regs, but more just, um, you know, their belief that it's a, a good, um, process. And I think, you know, it, it's up to the selectmen not to get too involved in the science, but rather to decide whether or not this is appropriate for Carlisle. And I think that perhaps the best way to think about that is the state, which through mass wildlife is promoting hunting, allows hunting, uh, in numerous state parks and state forests, um, and they're telling us that there's a serious problem in Carlisle with deer and yet they don't allow hunting in Great Book Farm State Park. And I think the decision therefore clearly is a, um, very important to look at context. And if the state thinks that it's not important enough and not dire enough that they're going to allow hunting in Great Book Farm State Park, there must be reasons for that. And I think the reasons are likely, um, the fact that there are gazillion trails there. Um, and, you know, perhaps other reasons, but if, if, if they don't want to allow hunting on state land in Carlisle, it seems a bit disingenuous for them to suggest that we, um, allow hunting on town land. Last thing I would say, if you do go ahead and allow the hunt, um, as I said in the email I sent, I believe it's, um, would be irresponsible to not require antlerless deer permits for every hunter because essentially if you don't kill doe, you're not doing anything that's long-term going to have any impact on deer population. And if the sole purpose of this is doing that, then really we should be only killing does, killing bucks is not going to have any impact. And allowing people to kill bucks and not have an antlerless deer permit, I think, shows that this is really about recreational hunting and not environmentally sound. Thank you.
Thank you. I have still some minutes allotted. I was going to give a half an hour. I've given up to, I thought I would give up to eight o'clock if necessary. Um, but also would love to be able to move on to hear from the people who are interested on the other side, um, on the environmental issues, um, the environmental impact of deer overpopulation. And I'm going to allow you to have the same sort of time per individual to make your statements. And then at the end of that, I, I will be inviting the, um, conscom trails committee and the land stewardship committee. And there was one more. I know there was four. Uh, but anyway, I will invite those committees, um, to also make their presentations before this selectmen embark on their deliberation.
Kate, you have RPCIN raising his hand.
Thank you.
Hi, can you be okay, Frank Sargent, Lowell Street?
Yes.
Okay, I, you know, I, I wanted to see what was going on here. I wasn't going to make any comment and it's, uh, maybe going far back, in 2003, I was working on a house on West Street. Um, I had a staging in the back, I believe it was Peterson's at the time, I know it's changed hands, but, you know, loud twang and I was on the staging with someone else and couldn't figure out what it was right away and then saw somebody running through the woods when we, we saw an arrow, like maybe 30 feet away from us and a guy waving his arms and apologizing and, you know, the police came, et cetera. And, you know, so thankfully no one was hurt, nothing happened. But from a, just a purely paranoid point of view, if you, if you want to take it this way, but, uh, and the young woman was talking about her family going through the woods, that's what it's about. I don't think, you know, we're, we're here in Carlisle and even putting aside the fact that we've been shut, uh, just shut in with the COVID-19, I, I don't think anyone should have to pay their taxes, live in Carlisle and also live in the fear for whatever amount of time you're going to have a deer hunt, that it's always that possibility. And I don't think it, and I know I've been hospitalized twice with Lyme disease and if I thought this was really the tendency of something that was really going to work, then maybe I would have a different view. But the bottom line on this is that I feel that we are, um, how's that one? I feel that we have, you know, we're one child being hit, we're one accident, we're one mother, one father, one, just one accident is all it will take for, for people to stand back and say, well, this was a bad idea. I don't think it's going to solve the Lyme disease problem. I don't think it's going to solve the deer problem. I just wanted to be on record and say that I think it's a bad idea that puts people in jeopardy. It does nothing for the town of Carlisle. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any people here who would like to speak? I, I don't want to say in support of deer hunting, I just want to talk, uh, those who are in support of, well, I suppose in support of, um, trying to manage the deer. Just making sure there's no chats, no hands up. You see anybody, Barney?
Well, Kim Buskey, but I think she already spoke, right? So this is just from before?
No, actually she didn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and she has written to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
It's super, super quick because I really think, you know, we've asked about the data, we've talked about the science about it, um, also hit the emotional side, um, the fact that the kids are home. Parents are not only home a lot with having a homeschool and work and anxiety is high, fear is high. The world right now is really in an unsettled place and living in Carlisle is a special thing and it's because it's safe, right? It's a small community and it's safe. And right now, all we have is open space and each other. All I'm asking, and yeah, with passion, right? And with science is open everybody's mind a little bit and consider not just your goal at the beginning of this, but where we are now and how things have changed and what Carlisle needs. And that's to be as safe as we can in our own environment. And that's it. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to invite conscom. Do you want to go first? And who from conscom wanted to make a, a report? Anybody? I saw Alex Bear was there. I don't know who else is here, if anybody. Jonathan, do you know? Who was going to present what?
Alex should be presenting for them. I, I think their chair, vice chair couldn't make it tonight.
Okay, well, I saw Alex, but I don't see him now, so.
He needs to be unmuted.
Oh, okay, well, if I could find him, I would unmute him.
If he's unmuted.
Okay, there you go. There you go, Alex. Welcome.
Alex, we can't hear you.
No, hang on, we'll see.
Must be muted. He may be muted in his own computer.
Uh, would you look at your computer and see if you're muted on your computer?
Yeah, I guess it muted us.
Oh, God, he's star six?
Yeah, six.
Can, uh, can you say something so we can hear if you're muted? No, you're still.
Muted. Not muted.
Now, now we can hear you.
We can hear you now.
You can hear?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, thank you, Alex Para, 31 Bellows Hill Road. I'm the Conservation Commission's liaison to the Deer Control Committee. At the request of the selectmen, the Conservation Commission met twice to review the proposals of the Deer Control Committee in regard to continuation and/or expansion of the bow hunting program. We've given you a letter which represents the unanimous consensus of the commission, by which I mean that commissioners had, some commissioners had additional views that were not agreed by the entire commission. So what you see in the letter, um, represents what the commission was unanimous about. And I just, I, I, I don't think my job here this evening is to respond to all of the thoughtful comments, um, that have been made, uh, by citizens. I'm just going to report to you in a kind of abbreviated way what the commission, uh, commission's consensus is. So, the, the first point is that the commission accepts, uh, both the regional data and the science concerning the overpopulation of deer in the area and the ecological benefits that can be realized by reducing the overpopulation of deer. And that's not just mass wildlife data, um, but there are many studies which, some of which have been cited to, in our report or our letter to you. The second point is that the commission, after two years of this program, agrees and accepts that the program can be carried on and has been carried on safely in conjunction with other uses of the town lands. The third, uh, point that the commission agrees upon is that there really is no evidence that the program has caused any ecological damage to town lands. The fourth is that the commission agrees that the current levels are at the program as it's presently constituted. The program contributes to the control of the deer population, but is probably or likely not effective to reduce the overpopulation. So, um, that brings us to the next point, which is that the commission agrees that the proposed enhanced program will likely contribute to the reduction of the overpopulation of deer. So, having said all of that, unbalanced, the commission recommends to the selectmen that they vote to continue the program and to accept the enhancements proposed by the Deer Control Committee with two additional recommendations. And one is that the commission would like the Deer Control Committee to further examine measures, um, to encourage the taking of does. And the second is that if the selectmen vote to continue the program, that the selectmen additionally develop and assist the Deer Control Committee in its efforts to communicate, effectively with the public and interested citizens. So that's the summary of the letter. I, I don't, as I said at the beginning, I don't want to spend, uh, time, you know, responding to each of the points. I think the Deer Control Committee has done a lot of that.
Ten seconds, Alex.
That was five minutes, oh goodness. Thank you. Has done a lot of that and I think we can leave it to the Deer Committee to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think I'm going to pause here and ask the selectmen if they would have any questions for Alex before we go on to the next report and then we can maybe, no? Barney, Allen? Okay, great. Let's move on then to the land stewardess, stewardess, sorry, stewardship committee. Do we have, who do we have here from land stewardship? Jonathan, maybe you can help me with, with that too, if you know who I should be looking for.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Debbie is here.
No, there you are. Okay, great, thank you. Deb, Debbie Geltner?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I kept saying hello, but nobody was.
That's why I, I couldn't tell who to, yeah, who to unmute. There we go.
Um, the land stewardship committee supports the bow hunting program in Carlisle and I'll tell you why, but I just want to first say that it's been very interesting and I appreciate hearing the feedback from the public. That's something we don't normally have access to and so hopefully we can continue to hear more and address a lot of those issues, but that's not really our purview. I wanted to also explain that the land stewardship committee purview is to look at this from an ecological standpoint. Excuse me, it's pollen season, can I say? First, I want to please express that we really need to preserve biodiversity. If we do nothing and we allow deer to reproduce at the current rate without increasing predation, we will lose even more of the essential understory and decreased regeneration potential. The forest will slowly and inevitably change to a simpler composition and structure, greatly reducing the number of wildlife species. And you can see this in the photos at the end of the LSE statement provided to the board of select. Second thing is inaction brings ecological and economic costs. Ecologically, overbrowsing will reduce native plant species that will be replaced with non-native invasive plant species. It is very difficult to reverse this trend once it has advanced without major effort and expense with no guarantee of success. At this point, our forests still have a chance of regeneration and invasive species suppression by native plants if we continue to address this issue by allowing predation through bow hunting. Economically, more deer means more movement as deer seek diminishing resources, which means more damage to crops, landscaping, timber production, plus more vehicle deer collisions. There are already more than 1 million vehicle deer collisions each year in the United States, costing more than 1.1 billion dollars in annual consumption by deer. They consume, by the way, one and a half tons per year, each deer, causes more than $1 billion in damage to farms, gardens, and timber production. And in conclusion, I'd like you to try and keep in mind that forest ecology evolves over an extensive timescale and the impact from chronal, chronically overabundant deer populations can have consequences that extend over decades and possibly even centuries. Given the high reproductive potential of deer combined with the human extirpation of gray wolf and mountain lion, persistent human predation of deer is needed to help maintain an ecological balance that will also help to protect the deer herd health. I know that seems a little counterintuitive, but the more overabundance, the worse the health of the deer. The alternative is allowing the local deer population to be controlled instead by starvation, disease, vehicular accidents, and some natural predation, all of which will be insufficient to. to protect forest ecology and biodiversity. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw Steve Tobin earlier. Steve, you there? And are you here to talk for Trails?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm chairman of the Trails Committee. Jonathan came and talked to the Trails Committee at our June 5 meeting about the proposed changes. The Committee voted unanimously to reaffirm the statement we made in 2019, which was the Trails Committee believes that the deer hunting program is currently managed, protects the safety of trail users. So we're looking at it from a trail safety standpoint, and we think that it is safe the way it's been, the way it's been set up and handled.
Okay. Did you have any recommendations to, you know, to help allay trail users' fears for the deer control?
Yeah, I think there needs to be more education about what the regulations are in terms of protecting public safety, and also in terms of making the deer hunters less anonymous. I know that Barney tried to have a get together last year to have neighbors meet with hunters, and very few people showed up. But I think trying to talk to hunters and realize that they are decent human beings and people who also love the woods and who are out there trying to be very, very safe about how they do their work. I think we need more public education.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Warren Lyman, I must have missed your hand up, being up. Would you, do you still have something that you would like to add? Are you there? Sorry.
Okay, so I am the co-chair of the Land Stewardship Committee. And one of the things I would like to add, and this was brought up a little while ago by somebody else, is getting a better handle on just how much of a problem the deer browse is. And I think a lot of you know that the state does have a program to evaluate deer browse throughout the state. They have perhaps three or four wildlife biologists to do this. It's a monumental task. They set themselves out a protocol so they could do this large task across the state. And the criticisms of it, I think in some regard are valid, but they had to keep it simple enough so they could do all 300 or 350 towns in the state. Would I like to see more data and better data? Yes, and I think Carlisle should look to press the fish and wildlife people, and if that doesn't work, to find another way to have more frequent monitoring of the current status of the deer browse impact in Carlisle. And not only more frequent, but more detailed. And I think many of you have heard from Kay Hurley, who's proposed this, and I certainly support it, that there's a lot more and better surveying that can be done. It's just going to take time and resources. And right now, the time and resources are probably not available to the mass wildlife. Does that mean we can't fill in the gap ourself? I don't know, but I think we should think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just checking, okay, there's some chats, they're kind of long and they're to everybody, so I'm going to leave those alone for now. Okay. Are there any questions from the board for the CONSCOM Trails or Land Stewardship Committees? Great, saying none, I think Barney, you can put your timer away, and then we can recognize the Deer Control Committee. Jonathan, did you have a presentation?
Hi, Kate, can you hear me? Do you want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I have a prepared statement. I wrote it assuming that I would go at the beginning rather than the end, so it may be invalid, but you'll get the idea. So I just want to start out by saying thanks to the Board of Selectmen for hearing us again today. With all that's going on in the world, it seems that deer overpopulation is inconsequential in the grand scheme of things. And yet, here we are to update you on the actions you gave us in our last meeting. So first, you asked us to describe our proposals to the Conservation Commission and the Land Stewardship Committee and ask for their input, and to have them come before you today and explain their rationale and goals if they support the proposals. As you heard from them, we have done that, and they both issued unanimous decisions and provided you with a couple pages of written feedback on why they made those decisions. We also took it upon ourselves to review the proposal with the Trails Committee, even though you hadn't asked for that, since the primary use of these lands by the townspeople is for passive recreation on the trails. And again, the Trails Committee made a unanimous statement that you just heard. In addition, we also contacted a conservation organization, the Sudbury Valley Trustees, and also the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and explained to them what we were thinking. And they have each sent you their respective perspectives. The summary of all of these things put together, these experts, conservationists, environmentalists, biologists, and botanists that we've talked to, state that we do have a deer overpopulation problem, which is negatively impacting our forest ecology, and that addressing it can be done safely with a bow hunt to reduce the deer population. We also reached out to Dr. Alan Rutberg of Tufts University, as requested by one of the citizens at a prior meeting. Dr. Rutberg is also an expert deer biologist, and he did give a talk to the town last fall, advocating for the use of contraception as a means to address deer population problems. When we queried him on the possibility of working with Carlisle to use contraception in Carlisle, he stated, unfortunately, and I'm quoting, "Unfortunately, we're not looking for another field site at this time, and at least in the short term, it's not realistic to consider deer contraception as a tool for limiting deer impacts on the town." So, another question that's come up repeatedly, and we've discussed it many times this evening already, but is how to measure the problem and assess the success or failure of the program using more than just a count of the number of deer removed from the forest. We examined four ways that we could go about doing this. One is partnering with a university research project. We have connected with a BU researcher, but because of the COVID crisis, she will not be doing her field work this year, and it will have to wait till next year. We also looked into hiring a company to perform deer surveys, pellet counts, forest health things for us. The only company we found that could potentially do that is not interested in working with us at this time, and would likely be cost prohibitive in the future. Just to give you an idea, they do work in Staten Island in New York, and they ran a contraception program there for 2,000 deer estimated, and it cost $4 billion. So.
Cheap and half the price.
Probably not on our, you know, we can find this in the pocket lint kind of situation. So we also had conversations with the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Wildlife, and we learned that they are planning, they were planning on doing a deer pellet count survey this year. Unfortunately, again, due to the COVID crisis, they could not hire the necessary technicians to do the work, and so it has been deferred to next year. They also said that they strive to get back to every town in the Commonwealth, once every five years, to do the forest health survey, and so they intend to come back in 2021 and do another forest health survey after the one that they did in 2016. So the last thing that we looked into for doing metrics is training Carlisle volunteers and to do the forest health surveys. And both mass wildlife and the Sudbury Valley Trustees are willing to help train interested volunteers in order to do these surveys, and so we do have the potential to do more extensive surveys than what mass wildlife can do on like a five-year basis. So all of this brings me to the question you asked on assessing deer overpopulation quantitatively and producing a number for you on how many deer we have and how many we need to remove to be successful. We had extensive discussions with David Stainbrook. He's the Deer and Moose Project Leader for the Massachusetts State Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, or Mass Wildlife. And the most important thing that he repeatedly noted is that the correct form of assessment is not a count of the number of deer, but rather the impact on the forest ecology. But he did understand that the selectmen needed some way to gauge the breadth of the problem, and for that, he was willing to work some numbers with us, which came back with an estimation that we currently have about 142 many deer in town. He did want to emphasize, however, that this is just based on the lower bound of 30 deer per square mile of his initial assessment in 2015 of how much deer, or how much damage the deer were doing to our forests, and his knowledge of comparable damage elsewhere where deer densities were known. But he did want to say and emphasized that the measurement of number of deer in Carlisle has not been conducted, and that such a number is only suitable for rough approximations and should not be considered the result of a rigorous scientific study. As such, this is the best number we have for you for a quantitative number of deer overpopulation. I am sure that you are as disappointed as I am that this is all we have. That said, I will remind you that the experts believe that the important measurement is the impact on the forest, not the exact number of deer, and so we should listen to the experts on the forest impact and weigh what action to take and whether or not it is being successful. So, the Deer Control Committee works under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. The Committee's charge is to help address the deer overpopulation in our town through a bow hunt on selected town-owned lands. The town as a whole has indicated that conservation is a primary consideration through the master plan process now underway and open space and recreation plans for many years. Based on our understanding, supported again tonight by the other town boards, that our conservation lands are at serious risk from deer overpopulation, the Deer Committee presented a plan to you to expand the bow hunt for 2020. We understand that this proposal is controversial and that you have a difficult decision to make. On the one hand, you have respected and knowledgeable organizations and individuals, including many residents of the town, who provide their volunteer time to make the town better, who are telling you that we have a problem and must act now to address it. On the other hand, you are hearing from townspeople who have concerns about bow hunting and those who adamantly oppose bow hunting. The Deer Control Committee is here to do the bidding of the Board of Selectmen and is ready to make any compromise or course correction deemed necessary. So first, thinking about what possible corrections we could make. It's my understanding that many of the concerns raised, the most common one is that individuals are uncomfortable on the trails at the same time as the hunters are in the woods. The Trails Committee and the Deer Control Committee have worked closely for the past three years to establish the current regulations, and the Trails Committee has mentioned that already tonight. They believe the current regulations protect the safety of all trail users. However, for those who feel unsafe on the trails during bow hunting season, my recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen direct the Deer Committee and the Trails Committee to find additional constraints to address these concerns. This could be additional setbacks, or days without hunting, or times of day without hunting. If you give us a direction on what we should do, we will follow it. Secondly, in order to be more, in order to more effectively reduce the deer overpopulation, the Deer Control Committee has proposed an expansion of the program that we believe will roughly double the number of deer taken from town-owned land. If the Board of Selectmen believes that an expansion at this time is not prudent, you could give us constraints. For example, it would be reasonable for you to say, "We want no net expansion of the town-owned parcels for bow hunting this year. If you want Hart Swanson land for bow hunting, you have to remove another parcel." You could say that you want no net expansion of the bow hunting season from last year. If you want to extend the season, you have to give up one day sometime earlier in the season for each day you add. Or you could say you want no increase beyond 18 hunters at the same time, so create a time-sharing system to have more coverage of the designated hunting parcels. All of these are perfectly reasonable instructions the Board could give to the Deer Control Committee. The balance, or compromise if you will, that we want to find ways to address these valid concerns that you're hearing and still run a bow hunting program that is more effective at reducing the deer population, as is being encouraged by CONSCOM, the Land Stewardship Committee, the Deer Control Committee, and the other conservation organizations I mentioned earlier. So the Deer Control Committee is ready to do its best to implement that compromise under your direction. That's all I have. Questions?
Thank you. Kenneth Bilitz, or Bilitz, part of one of these committees or?
Yes.
Dennis?
We need to. You need to mute.
You have, both your, you're on twice.
Yes, I.
I'm getting echoes.
I apologize for that. My name's Kenneth. I'm a member of the CONSCOM and was one of sort of the dissenting voices that Alex alluded to. I did vote for the statement that the CONSCOM issued, because I believe it is a recreational hunt, and I do believe it could be conducted safely. But I do believe that people's fears are real and need to be acknowledged and not dismissed. And the reason I've come to the conclusion that it's a recreational hunt was partly outlined by Naomi Oreskes. The number of deer that need to be taken to bring the population to control is far greater than the number that can possibly be taken by bow hunting. We've heard from a number of committees speaking to the very real consequences of the overpopulation of deer. One can acknowledge that that overpopulation problem exists, and at the same time, recognize that the bow hunt won't solve it. To be against the idea that the bow hunt will solve it is not to deny the problem. As a previous speaker said, so instead of throwing two glasses of water on the house fire, we're throwing four glasses of water on the house fire. If the recreational aspects are valued, then that would be a shared use of the land. The land supports a number of purposes. Ecology and conservation are among them, but so is the use of the land for things like hiking and for children just to play. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I would like, there are no further comments from any of the town boards or residents for input. I would like the Board of Selectmen to have a chance to have their deliberations. We might have questions for some of the boards, but I want to be sure that everybody who has wanted to speak has had a chance to speak tonight.
Kate, this is RJ.
RJ?
Can I make a few comments?
Sure.
Hello? Is it okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah. So as I listened to the discussions, and they were all very thoughtful, I was able to, in my mind, break the problem down into maybe two parts. On one side, there is a group that is concerned about, generally concerned about safety, the right to use the woods and the trails, and at the same time, at the back of the. And at the same time, at the back of their minds, they have a desire that Lyme disease is a concern, not a desire, but a concern, that Lyme disease is a possibility that could happen with increasing numbers of deer. On the other hand, I heard a group or a set of discussions that went to the point of saying, "We have a deer problem. There are a lot of deer here." And this particular method is in fact going to help us to eliminate the deer and bring them down to size. But I also heard some very good numbers which said that'll take 50 years. So my thing is, if the real problem is the number of deer and if it's 50 years, why don't we recommend all parties to come up with a program that is thoughtfully put together to eliminate the deer in one year down to the right size? Since these gentlemen on the other side want to do it in stages, it doesn't help. It doesn't help to resolve the deer problem. So let's come up as a town with a massive program for three or four days. Lock ourselves down like we do with COVID and just get rid of all the deer down to the level that we want. Let's not beat about the bush with this, you know, painful process of keeping the deer hiding in the woods so that, you know, for the next 20 years, they are in stress mode. It's a bad idea. The other thing I want to say is I've heard this wonderful discussion about we need more examination, we need more studies. And I think many of us in this audience are old enough that we've grown up in America with an ability to numb our minds to arguments that are made over and over again, which are like more examination, more studies, which in reality, the white elephant is obfuscate and delay. We all know that, but we don't want to admit that. And the others use it almost like this is real stuff. So let's all of us get together and just acknowledge that fact. This is just some way of saying, "Don't do it." So I encourage the deer hunters and the people who are interested in the deer, who all want to get rid of Lyme, to put together a four-day program, massive program with the support of the town, that in one year, we get down to the number we want. Thank you.
Thank you. That, by the way, is called bait and shoot. And don't think I haven't thought about it. Okay.
Fair, Kate. It's not legal in Massachusetts.
Ah dang. Or contraceptive. I mean, that was the weird thing to find out that, that they consider the Rutland's contraceptive thing pesticide, you know, go figure. So, okay. So we selectmen, it's in our laps at this point. We have taken in a lot of information. We hear the concern and the anxiety from some people. And, you know, some, I just want to say, some of the letters have assumed what our position is and have berated us for, you know, not, for taking maybe the, I don't know how, for taking a position on this and they can't see why we've decided this or that. And to, I just want to assure everybody, tonight is when the decision is going to be taken. We haven't decided anything. We have heard everybody. We may not take a decision that you might agree with, but we're going to do the best we can. And we're going to try to keep everything that we heard very firmly in mind on both sides. And we also are very, I think, cognizant of the COVID situation and that emotions are maybe running even higher as a result than they might have otherwise. But we are going also to try to make a decision, hopefully, on data and not on emotions. And having said that, we all know how hard it is to get that data. So please bear with us and let us have our discussion. We're going to, we may have questions for some of the boards and people, but we're going to start our discussion now. So having said that.
Kate, I do see, I don't know if you want to allow one more comment, but Els Bietta has her hand up on the, on her picture.
Oh, sorry. Els Bietta, you want to say something? I can't even find her. So she must, she's on your screen and not on mine.
Well, it's her, just on the video.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Els Bietta. Oh, but you're muted. Hang on. Just a minute. Let's see if we can unmute you. Unmute audio. Well, I'm clicking. It is not doing. It's not doing what I said. Tim, you want to give it a shot? See if you can unmute her? No, still muted. Els Bietta, on your, on your computer, do you see a little microphone with a dash through it? And would you click on that? Because it may be that you are muted. Yeah, that's it. That we should be able to hear you now. No, we still don't hear you. The white knight is coming back to the rescue. Let's see if he can do this for you. No, still muted.
Sam, feel free to close my door if you want.
We heard that, Barney.
Oh, sorry. Actually, you know, my sound is really sensitive, I guess. It picks up everything.
It does.
You had to hear that discussion between me and mine.
You might have to leave the meeting and then log back in because we cannot hear you. I'm sorry. Okay. So we're going to go, I'm going to go back to my other screen and recognize any selectman who would like to say something now, besides Barney shutting your door. Luke, you want to start us off?
No, you want me to start?
Well, I'm asking you if you want to start. I have to, somebody's stepping up. So I'm, you know, I'm.
Sure. Yeah, sure. I'll start. So I think everybody knows, a couple of years ago when this, when this whole program started, I was very supportive of it. You know, I was very supportive of the idea of trying to gather some information, you know, see where this program could go. You know, I am very neutral on the hunt itself. I honestly, I don't care if we do it or not. You know, but over the past couple of years, yeah, my attitude has changed. And, and, you know, part of it is really, you know, a lot of the feedback that we've heard tonight has just, you know, really been repeated year after year about, one, the science isn't there. And, and also, two, that, that people just don't feel safe. And, you know, I, I think we've tried to address it over the years. And, you know, and, and I completely agree with the Trails Committee that I think the Deer Committee has done as much as, well, there's always more that can be done. But, but, you know, I, I think the Deer Committee has tried to address the concerns that, that people have. But the fear is still there and the fear is still real. You know, I, people's emotions are definitely heightened during COVID. You know, but, but also too, you know, people have that emotional connection with nature and they want to be able to go out and freely walk the trails and not think about, you know, is somebody in the woods hunting and whether or not, you know, the hunter's an honorable person, a good person. I don't think that necessarily matters with folks. You know, we got that email from Allison Becker and, and, yeah, that, that was, I thought that one was pretty powerful, right? Where, so for the folks that don't know, I'll just summarize quick. Allison was out on the Davis Trail, her Davis quarter, and she came across a hunter dressed in full camo, had his, had his crossbow on his back, right? Not doing anything wrong. And, and, you know, and it just startled Allison. You know, it turns out she knew the hunter, you know, they exchanged pleasantries and they both went on their way. But, you know, that, that fear is real, right? And Allison's an adult. And she brought up the, the point about, you know, what if it were one of her children who used the trails? You know, what, what would that reaction have been? And, you know, and, and I don't know. And, you know, because there's that, there's, I think with a lot of people, there's that general underlying fear. You know, and as I said earlier, it's heightened with COVID. You know, it's, I don't know, you know, it, I just, so I'm, you know, I'm opposed to this, at least for this year until, you know, the COVID thing's behind us, we can really try to gather more information. You know, as Jonathan mentioned, you know, they have done an extensive reach out to BU, to Mass Fish and Wildlife, you know, SVT for training Carlisle volunteers. So I think that's phenomenal. But everybody's pushing stuff off until next year because of COVID, right? So, so we can't even really start to collect some of the information that we need right now. You know, and I think training Carlisle volunteers is great. And, you know, I mean, we have the community that'll want to do it. It still takes time to do that and to collect the data and, you know, to really start this process. I, you know, and as RJ said, you know, it seems like we're kind of trying to kick it down the road by saying, "Let's postpone." But, you know, the, the emotional impact is real here, I think. And, you know, if there's some way where maybe we can get folks on the same page down the road, you know, maybe we, we try for that. But, but, you know, I honestly, I feel like the fear factor is still too high. You know, and as Steve Tobin said, you know, with education, that might change. And, and I agree, you know, it, it may very well change down the road. But I just, I don't think we're there yet. You know, it. And just even, you know, so, yeah, there were the people that signed the petition, 227, I think Mr. Allen stated. You know, I've actually just kind of polled folks in my neighborhood. And while, again, folks aren't necessarily opposed to hunting, they, the, you know, statement has been the same. I just don't go onto those properties when I know, you know, when I know it's hunting season. So even though, you know, some folks have accepted it, you know, they, they still haven't fully embraced it. And, you know, and I do, I think we're limiting our uses of, of that recreational purpose during, during hunting season. So I'm still, you know, going to vote against it. That's not to say that I don't want to continue the discussion or, you know, bring it up down the road or continue the discussion throughout the year now. But, but I am going to oppose it for this year.
Okay. Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, I think I really come at it from two ways. The first is, is there a real problem? That is, is, is the understory being severely overbrowsed? I think there is some evidence to indicate yes. Even though we don't have data here in Carlisle, we do have it in other parts of the state where hunts have been successful, at least perhaps alleviating some of it. All of the evidence is not particularly overwhelming. So I think, yes, we do have a problem. Number two, I'm not, I am not convinced by the fears. I think, I don't, I mean, I acknowledge the fears are real. However, I think they're unjustified. The, the safety of bow hunting is unequivocal. There has never been an accident in the, in the history of the state. The Deer Committee has done a great job of setting up regulations where fears don't need to exist. That doesn't mean they don't. I acknowledge that they do. But I, I don't like to give in to what I consider to be somewhat irrational fears when all the evidence is to the contrary. On the other hand, I think if we ask the question, even with the expansion of deer hunting, will the impact be sufficient to solve our problem? And I think there, the answer is probably not. And it's, and again, we don't have really great data on it, but I think the answer is probably not. And so if that is the case, then I find it difficult to continue to support hunting on town lands to, as, as a solution to that problem. Because I don't, I don't think the evidence is there that, that is going to solve our problem. So right now I am leaning against continuing the hunt or expanding the hunt, simply because I don't see sufficient, I don't have sufficient confidence that it's going to do what we want it to do, which is to significantly reduce the deer population such that the impact on the understory will be realized.
Thank you. Barney?
Well, I've, I've been doing a lot of listening and reading everything that has come to me from people giving input to the board, as well as hearing everybody tonight. And I've also, you know, gotten emails just from individuals that I know in town and have had some good dialogue back and forth about the bow hunt and, and how people feel about it. And I, you know, there are a lot of strong opinions and I've tried to be, really to listen carefully. And I, I've done a lot of hard thinking about it in the last while. And so here's where I stand. I believe that there is deer overpopulation in Carlisle. I believe that there is damage being done to the understory. And I also believe that bow hunting is safe. However, I've heard from a lot of people, both tonight and previously, that they are uncomfortable using the trails when the hunt is happening. And I also recognize that during the COVID crisis, even more people are on the trails. I mean, heck, I've gotten my husband to go out for a daily walk who has never been a trail walker until this spring. And I, and I think it's a really healthy thing for all of us and good for our community. And I would not want to inhibit the use of the trails. But so I, so I want to figure out a way forward that can balance those things. And it may be that, you know, a number of people are not happy with that. But I believe it's possible, though difficult, and that we should try to find that balance. I know some folks are opposed to the hunt for moral reasons, and I truly respect that. I gave, I have given serious thought to the idea of, of supporting the idea of suspending the hunt for a year. And I've rejected that. I've decided I, I know I don't agree with that. Because of the, the previous comments about what I believe in. And I am, while I don't think the bow hunt on town-owned land is the, the complete answer to addressing the overpopulation of deer and the damage they're doing to the understory, I do think it's one part of addressing that problem. And I don't want to see the problem get worse. And I also am concerned that if we do decide now not to have the hunt for this year, that frankly, we will, we won't resume it. We will, you know, it's, it's been a very tough, you know, difficult conversation. And I know a lot of people feel really strongly about it. And I know also that how hard the Deer Committee has worked over the last couple of years, as well as the other committees that we've asked to, you know, look into the program. And I think we'll lose some of those people as a result. So I'm really open to looking for solutions. And I think we need to, we need to, we need to address in particular the concern about feeling safe on the trails. And, you know, Alan, I totally appreciate your point of view on that. I think that, given the numbers of people that are expressing that concern, I think it's, it's a responsibility for us as a board to acknowledge that and try to address it by instructing the Deer Committee to figure out ways to make people feel more safe about getting out on the trails. And so some of the things that Jonathan suggested, I think, are really worth considering and would, would address that, you know, limiting the, the season, limiting the hours, you know, trading or alternating when you hunt on a parcel, et cetera. I don't want to repeat what he said. And I also think really pushing the hunters to get those permits to hunt deer, to hunt doe and really concentrate. get those permits to hunt deer, to hunt doe and really concentrate on taking doe, which is going to do more to address the overpopulation, obviously, than taking bucks is a really good idea as well. So I would like to see us as a board, uh, instruct the Deer Committee to, and I could give some specific ideas to us, but, I mean, for them. But, I mean, in a nutshell, it's, for this year, not doing the expansion of the number of parcels and for this year, not doing an expansion in the number of actual, days of hunting, over what we had done last year. And to continue to have 18 designated parcels where hunters can hunt, but instead of limiting it to 18 individual hunters, that you allow hunters to, um, share those, that parcel, so that you're getting more, more saturation, more use out of the parcel that's been designated for hunting. And, um, and I think we will see more doe and, and other deer taken if we do that. So, in the nutshell, I think we should go forward with a bow hunt, but with very, um, clear direction to the Deer Committee about, um, addressing the concerns people have about feeling safe on the trails when bow hunting is going on. And, um, to also balance that with the need to try to increase the effectiveness of the deer taken.
Unfortunately, Nathan is not with us tonight, so there are four of us. Which makes it a little awkward, but, uh, I'm going to go ahead and launch on my little thing. Uh, I, I agree with him and him and her on a lot of a thing, on a lot of things. One is, I agree that there's a lot of fear out there and we need to address that if we are going to continue to have a deer hunt at all. I think, on the other hand, we don't, I don't want to, um, require the deer hunt to reach a certain goal, say, having to get 30 deer, but then not give the deer hunters their tools with which to do it. You know, we want you to get 30 deers, but you, you only have three days and you only have two parcels and you can only, you know, that's not fair either. So I guess I'm side with Barney about, uh, first of all, I would, I would be in favor of no net expansion, because if one of the properties just wasn't very good for, uh, hunting, seems to me the DPW land is probably not one that people, a lot of people walk on and there may be more opportunities for people to hunt there. And if they swapped acre for acre, that certainly could, um, be okay. I, I agree with you about the, the, the number of parcels and, and maybe putting more hunters on it to me. Because if you have one hunter and he can't hunt that week, nobody's hunting that parcel that week. So if they're sharing it, there's more possibility of somebody being on it. On the other hand, as I said, I do also very much appreciate the feeling that people have of unease. So I would say, I would like to have specific times that hunters cannot be on the trails in any way, shape or form. So let's say from, you know, nine in the morning to six at night or something like that. I'm not sure exactly when the deer are moving and what times the hunters want to be on the trails. So we would have, you know, that'd have to be carefully crafted. But if people knew that there's no hunters there, I mean, what's, why can't walkers share with the hunters if they know exactly what the time is that those hunters are going to be there or not going to be there? So I think, um, I'm, I've got to put in both camps. I've find it, I, I do also worry about, you know, the ecology and the overbrowsing and the overpopulation of the deer. So I don't know how we're going to fight ourselves out of this, our way out of this bag, but.
May I answer some of the questions raised by the board?
Surely. That's, that's.
So I, I first want to fully acknowledge, uh, you know, the, the repeated statements by each board member about people's concerns about hunting, right? I, I did that in my statement too, I believe. And, you know, although those of us who know a lot about bow hunting, and, and mind you, I'm not a bow hunter, right? I'm not a hunter at all. But as a part of being in this process, I've learned a whole lot about it. And can whoever is making noise mute, please? So I guess the fear of hunters is, is a problem. And as Steve mentioned, I think we do need to do a better job of education. But I think when you have kind of a primal fear, and I won't call it irrational, but I, I do think that it's a real fear. I don't know that education is sufficient to address it, right? And so I think, from my perspective, it makes sense to me to have the Board of Selectmen direct the Deer Control Committee to take additional steps to try to address that fear. And, you know, I could literally sit here and expound on half a dozen different ways we could possibly do that. But I think if the Board of Selectmen directs us to go do that, then it's better for us to do that in a Deer Control Committee meeting, rather than take the time of all these other boards. And so it's still a public meeting and we'll have a vigorous debate on the proper way to do this. But I think that's, that's a, a possible course of action. Essentially, what other constraints should we put on the system in order to address this? So, so that's the first thing that I wanted to, to say. Then, I guess, the next thing that I wanted to mention was, Selectman Lewis wanted to talk about the impact of being sufficient. And both Dan, the deer agent, and myself independently ran numbers trying to figure out, could we really be effective at this? Because I think that's an important question, right? It's, it's, it's not, you know, it, one could argue that, uh, taking any number of deer slows the rate of growth and so it's useful, but that's not enough for us, right? We really want to reduce the number of deer so that, uh, so that we can get back into the recommendation of 12 to 18. And, uh, and, and by the way, let me just comment, there was a, an earlier thing about it, discrepancy where six to eight versus 12 to 18. Six to eight was the recommendation until 2015, when the Board of Directors at Mass Wildlife decided to make it consistent for the entire state and make it 12 to 18. Prior to that, Eastern Massachusetts had a lower number. But in any case, um, so Dan and I each independently ran some numbers trying to figure out, based on how many deer we reasonably expect we have in town. And the, the number that we come up with for that is, you know, in the range of, you know, 350 plus or minus, right? Like 340 was what Mass Wildlife came up with. Dan came up with a few more on his, on his numbers. And so we do need to, we have 142 many is what it boils down to, right? And at the rate of, uh, of reasonable increase that we expect, and mind you, Mass Wildlife doesn't believe that this is necessarily a reasonable calculation. But if you did it something based on like simple compound interest kind of stuff, then, uh, then we believe that our steady state is about 35 deer need to be removed by hunting every year right now in order for us to have a steady state population. And what's actually happening on private land is about 31 deer being removed. And so we have a net increase of a few deer each year, but it's not, you know, a huge number. But the program that we ran for the last two years did tip us over that balance. And so we were having a net reduction in the number of deer per year rather than a net increase. And with our proposal, if you add on the 31 deer plus the 17 deer we hope to take, if we do everything, we'll be taking more like, you know, what, 48 deer? Right? Total by hunting. And if our break even point is around 35 as we estimate, then we're, we'd be reducing by about 13 per year. And if we have 140, you know, too many deer, which is what we estimate we have, then it's, you know, what, 11 years to be able to pull this off. That's an extremely long time. But the, the attempts to do more than that, I think, would be not something anyone in the town would support, right? For example, going ahead and using shotguns, right? That would just not be an appropriate thing to do. And so, so if we're going to be limited to the safest form of hunting, which is bow hunting, which I believe is the right thing to do, then I do believe the program can make a difference. And I believe it is making a difference, it's just making a very small one so far. So, so I think it's a, uh, it is important for us to have metrics to find out. And the problem that we have is that the best metric is the impact on the forest ecology. And the forest ecology metric is a lagging indicator. It's something that you're not going to find out for years and it's a very slow indicator. And so if we take a bunch of deer next year and try to do an analysis of the forest ecology, it's not going to immediately show a bounce back, right? It'll be many years. And so I think these are difficult problems for us to solve. And the question that we need to ask is, are we going in the right direction or not? And is what we're doing believed by reasonable people to be acceptable? So I guess that's where I, where I stand on that one. So I don't know if that helps Selectman Lewis with your, you know, with your, your data. But that's, that's the best that we can come up with. And mind you, I, I will remind you again, you know, I went through this with Mass Wildlife. And they say that, you know, one of the fundamental problems here is the deer numbers, or the, the deer reproduction rate is so variable based on so many different factors that trying to come up with a simple, you know, compound interest kind of mechanism to explain it is, is nearly impossible, right? It's really not an effective way to do it. So, you know, I, I'd love for there to be a better mechanism. But this is what we got.
I'd like to make a comment.
I'm sorry, I'm, this is, I'm, I'm asking for a board and committee members only at this point.
So, so that's, that's it, Kate. Those were the two big things I thought I would mention right now. If you guys have other specific questions that I can answer, I'd love to do that.
Thank you.
Well, I heard, I heard two competing thoughts here. And, and thank you, Jonathan. I think those, uh, do indeed alleviate some of my concerns, the numbers that you've given me. However, that assumes, again, we're going to take a, a larger number of deer than we've taken in the last two years. And from what I heard Barney saying is that we really should be talking about reducing the, the availability of taking deer, which it doesn't seem to me, that's just where we need to be. And I, and again, I think, you know, unless, and, and I agree, I mean, I have no question that, yes, we're not going to, in, in probably the next five or 10 years, we're not going to see, uh, effects on the understory from this sort of thing. That's, it takes longer than that for those kinds of changes to occur in nature. And that's okay. If, as long as you can say, okay, we're, we're, we're taking a number of deer that, that in fact is going to reduce overbrowsing. And that's all that really is necessary, in my opinion. Because that, in fact, will have the effect eventually that you want to have. The, uh, so I, I'm, I guess I've a little bit concerned here that we're, on one, on one hand, saying, uh, we need to maximize the number of deer that we're taking, but let's do it by reducing the opportunity to do that. And, and so I guess I'd like a little more discussion about that.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. I don't want, I don't want a half-baked thing. I think we have to fish or cut bait.
Yep.
Uh, either we do it or we don't do it. A half thing with, or where we tell the hunters, you have to do it with one hand tied behind your back. It's not the way I want to go.
So, so Kate, I, I agree with your perspective on that. But if I can just give you like a priority ordering from the Deer Committee, I shouldn't say the Deer Committee, for me as chair, okay? The number one thing is increasing coverage, right? And so if we currently have 18 hunters, if you were to allow us to go to, say, 34 hunters, but do a time share mechanism so that they're not there at the same time, I believe that would be the most effective thing that we could accomplish. Secondly, I think, uh, either adding the parcels or swapping one of the parcels, I think is the second most important thing for us. And third, and this is just based on those three big things that we're trying to, to add, right? Third is the season. And I am okay with you saying same number of days, but you can have them be different days than last year. Right? And I think that we could come up with a scheme that would allow us to have a system where we would end up taking more deer by using more of the season, but spread it out more. And it may be, and, and not, the, the rest of the Deer Committee might not support this, but it may be that we could come up with some scheme. For example, we'll say, uh, there's currently no hunting on Sundays. Maybe let's have no hunting on Tuesdays, right? And now you've got two days a week that you can do, right? Or maybe we'll say no hunting on Tuesdays, Thursdays. Now, three days a week are, are completely clear of hunters anywhere. So, so I think in, in priority order, tho- those are the three things that we can do. Oh, and I, I should mention, Kate, I, you did say that you wanted to have the hunters off the trails. And I don't believe we can legally do that. I think we'd run into Second Amendment problems by saying who's allowed to be on the parcels. What we can do is tell them they're not allowed to hunt at particular times.
That's what I'm, that's what I mean. I want them to finish something and, and move their stuff, you know, give them enough time, but that, I, I, yes. I didn't mean for the hunters.
Previously suggested that they don't want to see the hunters on the trails and it's our responsibility to get them off by a particular time of day. And, and I believe that we would encounter Second Amendment rights problems if we did that.
Okay. Well, it was, it's an, it's an, okay, fine.
Yeah, just.
You know what I mean? So that people would know still that they're less likely, let's put it that way, to run into it.
Because better for us to go and say whole days rather than parts of days.
Gotcha. Okay. I, that's.
Clear to people that want to know exactly when, you know, if they are, have fears about being on the trails at the same time, they would know then.
Yeah, right. Well, I, I want to make it clear. So if people are afraid to be on the trail, they know that that day there are no hunters or there is no hunting. There could be hunters, but there is no hunting that day. Yeah.
Yes, if any hunter were to loose an arrow on that day, then they would be in violation and we would have the deer agent kick them out of the program.
Right.
So, you know, I, I, I think part of the problem is though, you know, both, you know, Kate and Barney, you guys addressed, you know, reducing the program, right? But, but you've also addressed, you can't reduce the program and, and still have the desired impact that we want. You know, and, and I, I think that's the problem. So, you know, we start cutting days, we start restricting times, you're, you're reducing the program to a point where you, in a sense, render it ineffective. You know, and, and, you know, just to, you know, to kind of expand upon Jonathan's point about how, you know, this is a slow process, the understory doesn't, you know, restore itself in, in a year or two or five. I mean, if we vote to expand this, right? Well, you know, one, I think in order to actually have an impact, we would have to vote to expand it. And I don't, I don't support that, but, um, but I, I think that's what we would have to do. You know, and then, and then the numbers, the, the estimated numbers of, of deer that would be, uh, taken during that expansion. You know, it's an estimate and it's probably a fair estimate. But, you know, how many of those are going to be does? How many are going to be bucks? You know, you start, there's so many different factors that play in here. And, and at the end of the day, you know, we're really, before we realize what the impact is going to be, we're probably looking at a decade out, right? So, really, you know, if we, if we vote to move forward. So, really, you know, if we, if we vote to move forward, you know, we can't have this discussion every year. It's, it's, it's gotta be, look, if we're making this commitment, we're gonna expand it, and we're gonna expand it, you know, indefinitely, right? It really has to be one of these where, if we're gonna commit to an expansion, we're gonna commit to try to make those numbers, then this isn't an annual discussion. You know, and, and I just, I, I, with the fears, with the data, with all the information that we have, I, I don't think we're there. So.
I guess the other question, though, I mean, I'm gonna turn your concern on its head. What would happen, what happens a decade out? And I don't know who I need to mute here. If we don't do anything, what, what are, what are our so, forests and trail, you know, areas going to look like a decade? If we say, okay, we're just not gonna do it.
I, I don't know, because we don't really know what the problem is right now. We don't, we don't know how bad it is in Carlisle, because we don't have the data. So, you know, it, it, you know, I, there's, well, if, if we're only looking at six or eight deer, why don't we try to expand it on private lands? Right? Why don't we?
We talked about that. Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we work with the folks who are already supportive of it? You know, and, and see if we can, see if we can expand it on private lands. You know, and, and I, I just, you know, it, it seems like a lot of people are concerned, and, you know, the concerns aren't going away. And I, I just, you know, I, I, I think we need to listen to that, you know? And, and it's a, a big reason people move to Carlisle. They want to be on the trails. They want to feel safe. They want to feel, you know, they want to be part of nature just as much as, as the hunters do. And again, I'm, you know, I am not against hunting. I just, you know, I, I, I feel that. You know, we do need to address the concerns of the folks that walk those trails, about those trails, and, and use those trails on a daily basis. And yeah, and, and like I said, you know, if we're not gonna know for a decade, you know, if, if a slight expansion works, or if, you know, how will we know next year if we, if we've done enough? You know, or if we have to do more? I, when does it stop? So?
Well, it doesn't stop. I mean, if you're gonna keep this up, you've gotta keep it going.
But the expansion, right? What, you know, we've done it for a couple of years, and the idea is we need to expand it. But what if we come back next year, right, and they've only taken twelve deer, right? Where the, where the estimate is eighteen. Because, you know, an estimate is only that. It's an estimate, right? And, and while, you know, every hunter goes out with the intent to get a deer, they don't always back. You know, and that's nobody's fault. That's just how nature works. Where, where the hell do all the turkeys go around Thanksgiving? You know, we see them every day throughout the year, and then around Thanksgiving, they're all gone. See them, and you don't see them in Bill Recker. You don't see them on, on Monument Street anymore. Where do they go? Who knows? But, but, you know, the point is that I just, I, I, I think we're just gonna be chasing our tail. And I just can't, I.
I, I want to just offer a couple of comments. And maybe if, if, if my statement that we should not expand this year, maybe that was the wrong way of saying it, because I think we should go ahead with the hunt. I think we should address, though, the concerns that we have heard tonight and have heard before and have read about. I think they're very real, and we need to address them in terms of people feeling uncomfortable going out on the trails when hunting's going on. But I think we can balance those two things. I think we can, you know, if you, if you heard what Jonathan said, it's what I also believe, which is the single biggest improvement, or the thing that's gonna have the single biggest impact on the number of deer that are taken in a hunt here in Carlisle, is to maximize the hours of hunting that are happening on the designated parcels. And if you look at last year, and some of this is just stuff that we're learning, right? But if you look at last year, and the hunters that had permits, and how many of them were out there, day in and day out, when they were allowed to be, it was not, it was not even half-covered. And that's because people work, or because people choose to hunt someplace else, or whatever the reason, or the weather's lousy. But if we do that single thing, which is have the same number of parcels that are designated for hunting, so eighteen, but have more than one hunter that is able to use that and schedule them so that it is the, the, we maximize the number of possible hunting hours. I, I think, you know, there's no guarantee, as you say, Luke, who knows what the season could be like? But I think it has a very high chance of significantly increasing the number of deer we take. And I, I believe we should do both those things moving forward, and that it can be done. We can figure out a way to make some of the other changes so that folks that don't feel comfortable out on the trails when hunters are there can, can feel more comfortable. It will not be perfect. Everybody will not be pleased a hundred percent. But I think we can move in that direction and find a balance so that we're both addressing the overpopulation problem, and we are recognizing that those that use the trails that have concerns, we're recognizing those concerns by making some changes.
I just want, I, I just want to add two more things, and then I think we should probably move on, because it's already nine. And we have had ample time to listen and to talk. But one of the things that struck me in the, the letter from the cons comm is that we, there's over hundred, over a thousand acres of state-owned land. Great Brooks State Farm Carlisle Pines are not open to hunting. Additionally, over six hundred and fifty acres of townlands are not open for hunting, including Bana Davis, Mosley, Fox Hill, the Bisbee Land, the Cranberry Bog, Foss Farm, the Manusland, and the Toll, Toll Conservation Land, as well as the proposed additions of the DPW land and the Hart Swanson land. In comparison, the lands included in the present program constitute two hundred and seventy acres, but much is restricted by the five-hundred-foot setback requirement. So my point is that it's not as if there's absolutely no trails available in town if we have the hunt on two hundred and fifty of this, you know, six and sixteen hundred and fifty acres of land that we have. So that's, I guess, that's my other, I mean, we, I just don't want to get, you know, let hyperbole get us out of whack as well. There was something, I was gonna say two things, and I've forgotten what the second was, so I guess it wasn't important, or it's a lie. Yes.
Is, our current computations is that we're, have, we have hunting next to twenty-eight percent of the trails.
Yeah.
Trails have hunting near them, and the rest are, are clear. But.
This would, we change, if you went on the DPW, for instance, there are, I mean, I know there's one trail there.
And that's exactly why we chose Hart Farm and Swanson in the DPW, is because they had very few trails. And so if you insisted that we swap, that, that it's okay to take those and swap something else acre for acre, we would do that. And, you know, my personal opinion is we'd probably give up Greeno. And so, Greeno has a lot of hikers on it. And so it's a very big property. It's a very beautiful property. I think that might be a, a net, you know, a net win for the town, where we could potentially take more deer and, and have, you know, and balance the people want to go on the trails.
Yeah.
Right.
So, my second thing, I just saw David Friedman there, and that reminded me, the second thing is I would like to insist on more deer, doe take being taken, so insist on the, on the doe permitting. You know, some, some, some sort of.
We've actually discussed that a number of times, and, and I, I agree. The, the only difficulty is it's a bit difficult from a logistics perspective, because the doe permits aren't handed out until just before the season starts. And so we know that they have a doe permit until the last moment.
Okay, well, that, those are my, those were my two things. So, I, I'm ready to entertain. Oh, Luke, go ahead.
No, just one more thing, though. So, you know, I mean, if the, if the deer committee truly believes that they can alleviate folks' fears, right? Which, I think that's kind of a tall thing to ask.
I don't think.
They can't.
So. So.
We can address some of them.
They can.
Right, but, but some of the conversation, but some of the conversation has gone to, well, you know, we'll work with the public to alleviate their fears. Right? And, and, you know, this is justification for expanding the hunt. And, you know, I, I, I don't think it should be, you know? I mean, until we can actually realize that the deer committee can do that, at least some of them, you know, why, why would we allow this? You know, I mean.
Because I don't think the goal should be to, to alleviate everybody's fears, because that's gonna be absolutely impossible.
Yeah, no, and I'm not saying everybody.
What we can do is we can put those fears into some context and, and give some dimension to them. And if, you know, if you can, you know, some of the fears are expressed by, we can't walk on any of the trails. Well, that is not true. That is just not true. You can't argue that. So that's, that's part of it as well.
And if you have a couple of, you know, a couple of deer-free, hunt-free days a week, that would help as well. And I, and I, again, I, fears are real. I don't, I don't dispute the fact that people have fears. But the, the, the facts are, the, the bow hunting is, is very safe. And, but I, I don't, I still think we have to take into account the fact that people would like to have better use of our resources, and therefore we need to acknowledge that and make allowances for it by coming to some kind of a compromise. And what we, it won't satisfy everybody, and it will, it will reduce the number of deer we take. But that's okay. We have to trade one thing for another.
I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Bonnie?
Let's see. Let me try this. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve a 2020 bow hunt on town-owned land with the directions to the, with the instructions to the Deer Control Committee to adjust the program to do the following. One, what's the right word? Address the, the concerns of those who feel uncomfortable on the trails when hunting is taking place. I don't know if I need, do I need to say something more specific than that? Two, limit the number of parcels, limit the number of town-owned parcels. That's the right way to say this. Sorry, you guys.
John had suggested no net expansion of properties, or, and no net expansion of the season, and no increase beyond eighteen parcels.
Yeah.
Eighteen, yeah.
Eighteen parcels, right. Does, does that work for people? No, no net increase in the number of town-owned parcels to be hunted, and no net increase in the bow hunting season from last year. And what was the third thing, Kate?
No net expansion of lands, so they, they could swap parcels.
Right, I think I said that, but no net, and, and, right, no net expansion of the eighteen parcels.
Yeah, I would say that is, yes, hunters.
Hunters at one time.
Yeah.
Of, of, so no net increase, or remain at the level of eighteen hunters at any one time? Is that right? Is that the way to say it?
No, because they could have thirty-six, but they, there would only be eighteen.
At any one time?
At one time.
Yeah. All right, so am I phrasing that right? Those three, those three stipulations?
I think they sounded okay.
Can, can we also add the ant, antlerless?
Oh, yes. And, right, and number four.
Is that things to antlerless?
All right, develop, or have.
Encourage, encourage.
Taking of doe over bucks.
Well, I was thinking actually.
Taking of more doe.
Let, Luke has some specific thing he'd rather have.
Yeah.
No, I was just saying requiring them to have the antlerless, antler, that's a tough word. Deer permit? Yeah, require them to get it. I mean, I, you know, it was, you know, make it a requirement, right? Because, because the thing is, you know, and, and I think Jonathan, you've stated this before, is that, you know, that will eliminate some of the hunters, right? But if the goal here is really to reduce the deer population, we don't necessarily want those hunters, right?
Right.
I don't, that will eliminate hunters, and I do believe that this is an important thing to do. The only issue is it's a little bit difficult for us logistically, but I still accept that. And so, of the five constraints you've added, you know, I, I, I'll speak for myself as chair of the deer committee, I accept these.
Okay. I think, Barney, do you want to add that? The selectmen are directing these, you know, requirements, because the, their goal.
With the goal of.
To ensure that it is a deer control measure and not a recreational hunt.
Right, okay, so let me start again. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve a bow hunt on town-owned land for 2020 with the goal of reducing the deer population, not as a recreational hunt, with the following instructions to the Deer Control Committee to implement. Number one, no net increase in the number of town-owned parcels to be used for, no net increase over 2019 in the number of parcels to be hunted. Number two, no net increase in the number of hunting days over the 2019 hunt. Number, am I on three?
Yes.
Okay. No, no, let's see. Maintain the maximum of eighteen hunters at any one time. And, number four, in, encourage, require the hunters to obtain antlerless, I did it, Luke.
Be a tough word. Just because you're a teacher, that's why.
Right. And number five, what was number five?
It was alleviate the fears, which I, I think is gonna be a tough one.
Well.
You know?
Still, continue, continue to try to.
Well, those first, those first three things, I think Luke will, well, but yeah, okay. And number five, to to develop plans to lessen the, or to, what, help me here with some language, to encourage to address the fears of those who don't wish to be on the trails at the same time as the bow hunt is in.
It, it might be as simple as, you know, putting really clear signs out about, you know, hunters here, hunters not here, you know? So, I mean.
Well, yeah, there, there was stuff that we had talked about a couple of years ago, you know, marking trailheads and, and, you know, having hunters put, you know, the thing in their car, right, so it would identify that there's a hunter out there, and then having, because other towns do this, having the hunter wear the same sort of badge, if you will, right? Just showing that they're the permitted hunter, you know? I mean, we could even do things like, you know, require a certain amount of orange, right? You know, I mean, it, you know, there, there, I think there are certain things that we could do to alleviate some of the fears. It's just it's getting the community involvement and listening to folks and, and, you know, really being serious about addressing them, so.
Okay. So, so maybe number five is something like, and establish measures to serious, serious. So, so maybe number five is something like, and establish measures to serious, seriously address the, the concerns of those who are uncomfortable on the trails during hunting, during bow hunting.
Can I just add that are acceptable to the Board of Selectmen?
That are what?
That are acceptable to the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Just, just so we have some way to measure or not whether we've done adequate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, this is the Board of Selectmen that will, you know, decide this, you know? I, I mean, I feel a little, I don't know, I just, I think it's weird that it sounds like we're negotiating stuff, you know? I mean, it's a Board of Selectmen decision.
It is, but we're trying to.
No, I, I get that.
All these fears, I understand them, I appreciate.
No, 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 I mean with the Deer Committee, it's, you know, that, I just, I feel like it, we're turning it into negotiation and it, and it's not, right? I mean, it's, it's, you know, the Deer Committee's responsibility to convince us and the community's responsibility to convince us, right? It's, it's our decision. So, so yes, I, I agree with Jonathan, that's, you know, that will be up to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, so is that the end of your motion, Barney?
Good thing it's recorded.
Right, oh, boy.
2019, and I do, you know, we have the FinCom coming and the Wayne and, you know, so.
I, I want to, I, I do want to add a number six, which is that the Deer Control Committee pursue, pursue getting deer, a deer survey and a forest understory health survey done by mass fish and wildlife next, next spring. Okay. So those six, six points.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay.
Well, I'll second it, just so we can vote.
Okay, any discussion? We got a roll call vote. Alan, were you going to discuss or no?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm really not sure what we're voting on.
We're voting on continuing the hunt?
Period.
Yeah, essentially.
As, as it, essentially as it exists now.
Essentially with a few tweaks because.
Yeah, I mean.
No net expansion.
Trading parcel A for parcel B.
Yes, yeah, no net expansion. Going to see if that helps bring more, bag more deer.
See, I'm, I'm not sure that addresses the fear issue. I'm not sure that it addresses the budget issue, which is, which requires more hunters to be positive. And so I guess it's, it's, it sounds like we're not accomplishing much. Again, once again, we're just kicking the ball down the road. And that, I think we deserve better than that.
Okay. So what would you suggest instead, Alan?
I guess, I mean, I, I would like specifics that we, for instance, that, that hunter-free days are designated, that will help with the fear issue. That's a specific thing we can do that we're, that we're talking about. One of the things that's not, that hasn't been addressed is what the previous plan, where they were going to try to get the cooperation of private owners to relax the 500-foot barrier for hunting, again, with permission of the property, adjacent property owner. I mean, there were a number of things that made the hunt more effective, that is, they were essentially, you know, significantly increasing the number of hunters, although not at any one time, so that there would be increased coverage again. I don't, I'm not sure you can do that while also reducing, reducing the number of days you can hunt. Perhaps you can. They're not, they're not necessarily mutually exclusive. But, I mean, I think before we vote, we ought to have a, a more specific plan than simply saying we, we are sending this back to the Deer Committee and we'll see what they have to say.
Yeah, I, I thought we were being, you know, more specific than that with the six stipulations, but.
I mean, I, I'm fine with the six stipulations, I just don't think it addresses the real issue is the need to take more deer while we also address issues of fear and the, the way we're, the way that's going to happen. I mean, if we don't expand, because in the, in the way that the, the expansion's been justified in the past is the season got expanded, the number of hunters increased, the, the private owners were going to be approached. There were a number of things that were going to get in there, which gave some hope that we'd be taking a significantly larger number of deer. Those now seem to be gone.
Well, there's, there, this wouldn't preclude the, you know, going ahead and asking private landowners to, you know, give permission to, I mean, that's been something that Deer Committee is still talking about doing. I guess maybe we need, if we need, want to specify it, we can.
I guess, I would like to see the plan upon which we're voting, rather than something to be developed.
More detail, yeah, more detailed.
Specifics.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Alan. I mean, if, you know, it, it could be that we say we're going to reach out to those property owners that are, you know, that could expand that 500 feet, and what if none of them say yes, right? I mean, you know, there, there are just a lot of hypotheticals here that, you know, we don't know. Yeah, we don't know when we don't know. And, and it's problematic, because, you know, if, if we're banking on these things to increase the yield and, you know, it, it comes back and bites us, then, you know, we've really done nothing to, to expand this, so.
Well, Luke, you want to make a recommend, a, a motion?
Oh, God.
Well, or Alan, I don't care. I can't, you know.
No, I, I think, I think a motion is premature at this time.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Yeah, yeah, I, right, I think we need to get, you know, we need to get serious feedback and determine what exactly we are going to do to move forward and what we're actually going to vote on.
So then, what I'm hearing is, Jonathan, I'm afraid we're sending you back to do some more homework. Last time you came, we asked you for homework, you came and you actually did an excellent job, and I do thank you for it, and I, I am sure that you spent a lot of time and energy on it, because we asked you to bring us recommendations from three different bodies, from Com, well, from CommsCom and.
Trails.
Right. No, Lance Stewart's, and, and he brought Trails on top of that, when we didn't ask, hadn't asked him. And so now, what we would like to see is a plan that would, that you could, or a proposal that would show no net expansion of number of parcels, no net expansion of the season, no increase beyond 18 hunters at any one time on the properties, and a proposal that would require doe, you know, antlerless permits to be required, how you would propose to allay fears, or some, some proposal that would work towards addressing valid concerns of town residents about use of trails in town. And was, oh, and, and I guess we're asking also that you would already do this, some outreach to some of the neighbors to see how many might be willing to work with us along the edges of the, of the hunting areas.
So, Kate, I can do the first three, but the latter one is going to have such a long timeframe that the hunting season will have started before I can get you a plan.
What do you mean the latter, Jonathan? You mean the letters securing permission from landowners?
Because in order to do that, we've got to come up with a letter, we've got to get it approved by Town Council, we've got to then send the letter, find all the abouters, send the letter, wait some reasonable period of time to get a response, and if we have to do all that before we come back to the Board of Selectmen, I fear that it will be August or September, and that will not give us enough time to produce actual regulations.
No, all we're asking is that, is that, does it, you say this is something we're going to do?
Oh.
We don't need responses from the people at that point, but it needs to be part of the plan.
Okay, the plan is that we will reach out or not.
Correct.
Just fitting the plan. Okay, that's, that's fine. I thought you actually wanted me to reach out to everyone and find out who was going to say yes.
No, not necessarily, no.
Yeah, before I ask Jonathan to do all this, though.
So.
No sense of the Board of, you know, you know, I don't want them to come back and we're going to say, oh, but now we want you to do this and the other, and we still don't like it, or whatever.
Kate, I have, I have a concern. One is, at the beginning of this meeting, you said you were going to make a decision.
Well, I really wanted to make a decision, but it doesn't look like it's.
Yeah, so, so my concern now is the Police Department representative has not been attending meetings, and I am concerned that we're not going to have a quorum, and we have a particular person in mind to add to the system in place of the police personnel, and I'm wondering if the Board could appoint that person effective immediately, at least, so that we could probably make quorum? Because if I can't get the committee together to actually talk about any of this, we can't do anything.
I, I, I'm looking at the rest of the Board, I don't see why we couldn't do that. I, I do know the chief has said he, he does not want to have the police involved as a voting or active member on this committee, because he feels this is really not the place of the Police Department. He requested us to take that member off.
But he did say, of course, they'll respond to any concerns that come to them.
That, right, exactly.
Yeah.
Right, so I guess, I, I of course can't make a motion, but it would be to appoint Stephen Keel of 800 Curve Street to the Deer Committee effective immediately.
Wait, wait a second, what is that? We're just going to appoint somebody that we don't know? I mean, we don't, we, we meet every week. I think we should open up the opportunity to allow people to apply for it. I mean, you know, there are a number of people on this, you know?
No, I, that's right, it's, that's fine, but we need to do it.
Yeah, but we meet every week, we can do it next week, but.
Well, we're not meeting next week.
We're hoping to go back to our Tuesday, regular twice-a-month schedule, but.
Well, I, we could, we could do a 10-minute meeting to make an appointment. I mean, you know, we.
Okay, just, let me, let me just explain real quickly, is we need a new deer agent for next year, the deer agent is retiring. This person has volunteered to be the deer agent, and we have reached out to all of the hunters in the program, asking who would be willing, and this is the only person who has stepped up. So if you want a deer agent next year, we must appoint this person.
Well, I don't like being strong-armed in this stuff. But, so, so, so then, you know, this is the whole thing with this, though, it's like we circle around and around and around, and it's all hypotheticals, and now it's okay, now we got to appoint this guy or we don't have a deer agent. We're not ready for a hunt.
Because in the March meeting already, I pointed out that we needed to do this. So, I'm, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen doesn't remember, but it's been an open issue between the Deer Committee and the Board of Selectmen since.
Well, you should have presented the person earlier. The person who isn't going to be the deer agent should resign and bring this other person forward. We can't just appoint somebody that we don't vet. I mean, come on. You know, the, it's, it's clear we are not ready, and the Deer Committee is not ready.
Well, then, really, then, I think we should vote to say, we're not ready for a deer hunt of any kind, and we should just vote that tonight, because, you know, I don't see how we're going to be anywhere in three weeks.
Right, yeah, I, I agree.
And Kate, can I just point out that Barney's motion's still on the floor?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It, well, the unseconded one.
Well, I think Alan started to second it, I think, but.
I think he did, and yet then you had discussion, so.
Right, well, we have to vote on that one, then, this, this vote.
Or you could, or you could, I suppose you could, but allow her to withdraw without objection if nobody, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And the seconder agrees.
Okay, yeah, so we no longer have.
I can withdraw the motion.
Okay.
But I just, I know it's getting late, and I know we've had tons of discussion about this, but I think we should try to, you know, take a deep breath and, and think about it just for a minute or two more. I think we should separate the appointment of somebody to the Deer Committee, separate that from the question of what we want the Deer Committee to do. It's another, it's a separate issue, and we should follow the usual process, and so, you know, if we're going to.
Except that the Deer Committee, if the Deer Committee can't act because it doesn't have a quorum, that's, you know, that makes it a difficult thing then, that puts them in an impossible position, so.
Well, I, we have been acting without the active participation of the Police Department, so I think, Jonathan, we just have to make sure we get, you know, the people that we have on the, on the Zoom call to do this. And, and if the Board is willing to have a quick Zoom meeting, you know, next week to consider the candidate and approve somebody, great. If not, we do it in two weeks. So separate that out. So the other question is, and I think what I'm hearing Kate say, which I agree with, is that we, as a Board, all need to be ready to seriously consider and be prepared to adopt if we find the plan is acceptable and reasonable. Something that the Deer Committee brings back to the Board of Selectmen, that is a more detailed plan for doing all the things we've talked about tonight. But if we don't have, if we aren't as a group prepared to seriously entertain that, and it's more a way to, you know, sort of prolong the agony, then I, I don't, I don't think we should put the Deer Committee through this. Personally, I'll speak for myself, I do think, A, that, that it's possible to come up with a compromise plan that will not be perfect for everybody, but it will move us toward the two goals, as I understand them. One, to continue to address the problem of overpopulation and damage to the understory, and two, address the concerns that we've heard from people tonight about feeling safe on the trails when hunting is going on.
So, having heard what Barney says, are there any reactions to that?
No, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Does that mean you're open to voting for a bow hunt for 2020 with a, I'm just open to it.
I look at everything objectively, and I think.
If I see the, yeah, I need to see the plan to say yes to that.
I know, I know, but I'm just asking if you're, because I, I really, I suppose, Luke, you know, I'm, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but, you know, I think you've made pretty clear at the opening of both this meeting and two weeks ago, that you don't support the hunt, in a pretty.
Right, because it is poorly organized right now.
Okay.
We don't have facts, we don't have data, we don't have any real plan, you know, I mean, we asked for a plan, nothing came back, it's, well, we'll, we'll address these if.
No, that's not.
Ah, no, it is, it, it's specifically in Jonathan's, it's specifically in Jonathan's letter, we will expand upon this if the Board votes to move forward in those directions.
Yeah, but you've seen the proposal he put forward, he's had it for a while about.
Yeah, and we've had, and we've had problems with it. So, you know, it, these things need to be fully addressed. If they are fully addressed, like everything else, I will vote objectively on it. And, and this is the second week in a row now, it's like, please stop with this, Barney.
Stop.
Stop putting me on the spot as having a preconceived notion about something. I mean, you did it with complete streets, and now you're doing it with this. I will vote objectively, that is what I do. I have proven that for the past five years, and I will continue to prove it. If he, if the Deer Committee comes back with a plan, then. If he, if the Deer Committee comes back with a plan that is thorough, it addresses the issues that this board has, I will vote in support of it. If it does not, I will not.
Yeah, this is not any, this is no personal.
We lost somebody on the, on the Complete Streets Committee because you accused the committee of sneaky actions and backroom deals. And come on, I, I think you know me better than that, Barney, please.
Well, let's not make it personal, Luke. I'm just asking that.
Well, you, you just did. You said, I'm gonna say, Luke, specifically you. Will you be objective?
No, I.
That is, that is calling me out specifically.
Yes, I did. I asked if you would be open-minded, because my sense of what you had said earlier was that you don't support the hunt. That's all I was.
Not as it is addressed right now, no.
Okay.
I mean, is this the way the board's gonna be?
I hope not.
Yeah, because I will not stand. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, there should be respect between board members. And, and there hasn't been. I just.
Okay, well, why, why don't we talk about this offline, Luke? Because I.
We probably should.
I think that would be a better.
I don't intend for you to feel that way.
I'm going to table everything for tonight. I think we're tired. Emotions are running high, and I don't think it's the best environment in which to make decisions. Unless somebody wants to do something else. I, I regret that this is devolved, and I'm not blaming anybody here. This has just been a very tough night. We have other things on our agenda, important things that we need to address. It's 9:40, and. I apologize, Jonathan. I will apologize to you, because I think you're in a very bad spot there as well. I think you have been coming and asking for direction. I think you have brought us plans, have asked us direction about it, and I'm not sure you've gotten the, the kind of direction that you've been requiring from us either, so.
Kate, that's okay. I took this job knowing this was a controversial post, and, and I'm okay with that. I will do my best to get what you guys want done.
Okay, and I think you know, at this point, what we're asking for. And we'll see you another night, and we'll, if you need, we will get you another member as soon as possible when we get. Probably is good to get us a couple of letters, or a letter, anyway. Usually we get a letter of interest from the prospective members.
I believe it's in Tim Gutter's inbox.
Okay. Great. Moving on, we're gonna go to the discussion with the moderator, if he's still hanging in with us. Wayne? No, Wayne?
He had said earlier, I think.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there he is, okay. You having fun yet? About the annual 10-meeting planning.
Yeah. So, um, I think just in, in brief, we're, we're moving ahead nicely.
Okay, I think we've had the person muted that we needed to get muted. Okay.
So, real quickly, we're moving ahead nicely. I, I think it's mainly down to just some fairly operational things, sort of figuring, figuring out the seating arrangements, placement of microphones and cameras and, and stuff like that. So, so that's actually progress to get down to some of the more mundane things. But when you're doing it in a new location, after you've been doing it in one place in one way for 40 years, you just have to think through all of that stuff. One area of, sort of, the one area that, of concern that we don't fully have worked out is obviously doing it daytime, starting at 10 o'clock, out on the plaza. It could get hot and sunny, and we're not gonna have any, you know, it's not going to be covered. We will be looking into having some pop-up tents so that if anyone needs to get into the shade, they can, but it, it's not going to be a whole lot of shade, and there probably won't be too much that we can do. But we'll do our best just to make sure that, that people are aware of that, and they bring hats, bring umbrellas if they need to, and so forth. So, so that kind of covers, I think, the, sort of, the logistical planning, and I won't say anything more about that unless there are any questions on that piece. The one substantive thing to bring to your attention is that this legislation that I've been mentioning for months finally did pass and was signed by the governor on Friday night. You may have seen the email from Town Council, their general informational email that came out today, had a nice summary of it. And it presents you with the option of reducing the quorum. Our quorum is currently 150. Just quickly laying out arguments for you, for and against. There's not, I, I don't believe that there is a safety need, a public health and safety need. I think we can very, very easily accommodate 200, 250 people on the plaza with plenty of social distance and a lot of fresh air. So it's not really a safety concern. At this point, frankly, it's just a question of, are we actually going to make quorum? Having us pretty successfully eliminated almost anything controversial from the warrant, except for perhaps for the extension of the moderator's term to three years, which I don't think is going to bring out any opposition, or, or support, for that matter. You know, the concern would be that, that we go through a whole lot of effort and actually financial expense to get the thing organized and then not have people show up. On the other hand, you know, if that happens, you know, maybe we just sit around for a while, and people get on their cellphones and call friends and neighbors and try to get them out, and we can probably do it that way. But if you wanted to, you could reduce the quorum below 150. In order to do that, however, you'd need to give post-notice that you want to have a meeting to consider the reduction of quorum. So basically, that means you'd have to post notice tomorrow and have a meeting next Wednesday or Thursday, just to consider the, the question. So I, I'm not at this point recommending it, but I felt it appropriate to at least lay that option out to you if you were at all interested in it.
Anybody interested in reducing the quorum?
Yes. I'm, I'm, I am concerned that with the lack of highly controversial issues on the, on the agenda, that in fact, there would be not be a great incentive for people to come out, especially if the day is particularly hot or humid or something like that. And I think some reasonable reduction in the quorum, which would better assure we would be able to have a successful town meeting, even though we're not doing very much at it, would be, I think, would be judicious at this time. And I would, I would, I think we should put notice out that we will be, we will have a meeting to discuss reducing the quorum. And I, and I wouldn't want to reduce it a lot, but certainly, maybe take it down to 100 or something like that would be a reasonable thing to do, and would, would better ensure that we would not be having a lot of effort gone in vain.
I agree with that.
Luke, do you have any opinion?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay. Frankly, I think if we're gonna reduce the quorum, we ought to reduce it. Plenty, we could, we could say, you know, reduce the quorum, but then not start the meeting until we have 100. But if we don't have the 100, you know, we can still start it, you know, or whatever.
Well, we don't have to decide that. All, all we have to do is decide to post the notice that we're gonna consider it.
Right, so can I have a motion, please?
I would move that we post a motion to consider reducing the quorum for town meeting for this upcoming session.
Second one? Okay, Barney seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Okay, I think we should put the deer hunt on it, and then.
That would do it.
Yeah.
Deer, deer and dogs.
Does it every time?
Just to be clear, so, so you better figure out when you're, when you're going to meet. And Tim, I don't know, I don't know how you, how you count days on, on posting.
Yeah, I think to be safe, we might want to make it Thursday instead of next Wednesday. It, it, it would be more than, more than seven days' notice.
Okay.
You, you probably could get away with posting it for next Wednesday, but depending on when you wanted to meet. I mean, it wouldn't have to be an evening meeting. It would be an open public meeting on, you know, like this is, and anyone could attend to it. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a very long meeting, I don't presume. But up to the board whether you want to meet next Wednesday or, or Thursday. I did talk to Town Council, and he said posting a notice on the website and the publication of the agenda for the meeting is sufficient notice. So we don't have to take out a legal ad or anything like that.
Okay. Well.
Yeah, why don't we set it for like 8:00 in the morning on, on Thursday?
A week from, right?
A week from this coming Thursday, yeah, the 18th.
Okay, hang on. I'm sorry, I'm just, I have an appointment for a fasting lab on that day. I'm trying to decide, I'm trying to figure out whether it's for a time. Okay, 8:00 on 8:30, you said?
Any, any time. I just put it out, get it, get it over with and get on with the day.
Understood.
It might work better for Luke, or if he's working.
Yeah. They have calls starting at 9:00 on Thursday, so.
All right.
9:00 through 6:00, yeah, one of those great days.
6 works for me, I'm up at 5:00.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so what time do you want on the 18th?
8:00.
8:00 on the 18th. New, new event. Okay, and, and Tim, you will send us an invitation, right?
Yes, yes, I will.
Thank you.
And post it.
And, and just, there, there was, I see some questions on the chat, and just, just so that the public is, is clear on, on this, that there is emergency legislation at the state level that allows the Board of Selectmen to vote a temporary reduction in quorum, subject to certain requirements because of the state of emergency. It only would apply to this meeting. It's not a permanent change. That could only be adopted by town meeting itself.
That's right. Okay.
So that's all I had.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any questions about town meeting or anything else?
Just let people know, since we have a lot of people on the call here, that there was some concern about elderly people coming and getting up there. Actually, it's gonna be easier than the normal town meeting, where there were no steps to call. There's gonna be parking very, very close to the plaza for people who need that kind of assistance. And so it actually should be even a little bit easier for people who have mobility issues than the standard town meetings, since there are no steps to climb or anything like that. So hopefully, they will get a good turnout, and everybody will be, will feel welcome to come.
Bring your hats and umbrellas and mosquito spray.
Hats, umbrellas, mosquitoes, and water. Bring your own water.
Okay. Okay. Town administrators report.
Oh, Kate, I think.
No, no, there was something else we were supposed to do.
Yeah, Victor, the Chair of the FinCom is here tonight to talk about the town meeting-related matter, the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, that.
Hello. Hi, Victor.
How are you guys doing?
Yeah.
I know, I've been listening. This will be a quick one. So, the FinCom, as we had discussed with you, I think it was last week, you know, went ahead with the aspect of a flat FY21 budget, flat FY20, with the expectation that we would revisit this in the fall. And the reasoning really is the, the three uncertainties that we highlighted for you in prior conversations, which two involve the school, obviously, the state aid to the school, as well as what school would look like, especially since the way that they do school, as it stands right now, likes to be quite different than, than normal. And the third one really is around where unemployment's going. And you've seen some recent news to say, well, you know, unemployment isn't as bad as we think. I think what they neglected to highlight is that there's still some industries that are going through that process of unemployment, essentially laying off individuals. So we don't know where that's gonna go. So those are the uncertainties that, you know, in August, September, maybe September, we'd have much more clarity in order to have much more informed budget. One of the things that we want to make sure doesn't happen, and we wanted to do, is to provide guidance to the departments and the commissions as to what does that mean? Because obviously, this is a temporary. It's a three-month budget that, it's an annual budget that we're gonna revisit in a few months. So we drafted a memo that we actually reviewed last week. Kate was on the, on the call as well. And initially, we thought it was, would be good as a FinCom memo, but then in talking with Kate, as a, as some thoughts, as it might be a better from the standpoint of the departments and the commissions hearing from both FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, being a joint memo essentially to them. So I think that's one aspect that we can discuss this evening. The other one is that one of the guidance, one of the guidance points that we highlighted was, was around COLA. And, you know, from a FinCom perspective, our recommendation is not to realize COLA until we actually revisit the budget in the fall. And however, that's, that's certainly a guidance that, you know, it's really a Board of Selectmen decision as to whether, whether to go down that direction or not. However, regardless of what the Board of Selectmen decide on that, we will hold essentially a flat budget to FY20. It's not gonna increase if you make a decision to add COLA in there. So, so I think that's the piece that, you know, I don't know if you sent, Tim or Kate, you sent the memo around, but there's a bullet item around that that, you know, really wasn't for us to fill in. We just kind of highlighted it. And that is really the, the nature of the second question. So if we agree that, or you agree that it should be a joint memo, then I think that the second, that third bullet is something we want to make sure that we, we get alignment on. It's nearly not our alignment, it's not our call. It's from a Board of Selectmen perspective, what you want to put in that bullet in terms of guidance.
I didn't send it around. Tim, did you send it around?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
All right.
Only to the board members.
Right, right.
Correct, hasn't gone any further than that.
Right, okay.
I can bring it up as well, if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, that'd be good, I think. That'd be great.
Okay. Tim, can you let him share his screen, or can I do it? One participant can share at a time, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Either way, let me know if you want to do it, or you want me to do it.
Oh, yeah, we might let him do it, but I have to.
Let's see.
Have to figure out how to let you do it.
I made Victor co-host, so I think he can do it.
Then you can do it.
All right, let me see if I can find it here. Oh, too many, too many files open at the moment. Here, let's try that. Is this the right one?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. After the copy I got wasn't highlighted. You said, hi, I'm sending you the highlighted version, and it wasn't highlighted, so.
All right. So as you can see here, if you want to read over very quick, I don't know if you had a chance to look over it, but, but really, I think the direction here is maintain current staffing and organization, seeing that we're gonna revisit this budget. in the fall. We do not want the departments to start, you know, reducing staff or reducing hours. There is room enough for them to maintain their current organization for three months within the flat budget. So we want to make sure we clarify that, as well as clarify that just because we're providing this guidance right now, doesn't mean that come in the fall, maybe the budget's even less than what it is right now in terms of FY20 flat. So don't you make changes now, wait until the fall. You know, if there isn't any changes to the, if there's a further decrease, then you might have to consider it. If not, then maybe you, I think, we're just looking to postpone the decision for them to the fall.
I just want to point out, there's one exception to that, and that would be the Board of Health position that.
That's right.
We all supported, and they're going to go ahead with that reorg because.
So just make sure, I actually clarified this a bit. The point of this is that they should not look at this budget and feel that they are obligated to change the structure. If there are other reasons why they would want to change it, that is certainly their purview, but do not let the budget drive that decision. That's the nature of this point. Second is minimize discretionary spend. This is just a carryover from what we've kind of directed them to date to close out FY20. And then the third one is the COLA, which we left the TBD. This is for you guys to fill in if you want to provide direction. If you don't, we just can remove it. Here it says COLA for non-contracted employees. We just said would be discussed by BOS, and they will provide further guidance. If you wanted to come up with some type of verbiage to put in there beyond that, you know, that's certainly your prerogative, but that's how we would have written it outside of any decision that you made around COLA.
So COLA, I want to point out, non-contractual employees are usually awarded COLA. We approved a 2% COLA for next year. But those contractual employees who have a 2% raise plus steps and everything else are going to continue to get those next year because they're getting that by contract. So there'll be a few employees left behind because they don't have a contract and they won't get the COLA. So I think we need to think carefully about that. It is an extra spend. It means that they, they're going to have to cut, I mean, any department that has employees that are getting, you know, by right, so to speak, raises are going to have to find some other places in their flat budget to find the money for those raises. On the other hand, I hate to leave, personally, I hate to leave just a few stragglers behind with no raises at all, unless we're willing to seriously discuss retroactively paying those COLA, the COLA the next year or in the fall.
So let me add one piece to that, is that when we decide on a, and we had some discussion around this, when we decide on a fall budget, it is possible to retroactively kind of make things whole. The other note here is if you decide to go forward with a COLA now, they're going to have to trim, obviously, other expenses to be able to support it. And if FinCom comes back with even a lower budget in the fall, then there's going to be challenges, that you cannot take that COLA back. And so that's why, from a FinCom perspective, you know, outside of the fairness question that you're noting here, from a financial perspective, that may put certain departments in a bit of challenge if that were to happen.
Well, I guess I'd like to know personally, how many employees we're talking about with this COLA? Because if it's, you know, if it's five employees, it's not even almost worth talking about, and, you know, in terms of money. And in terms of morale, I don't think, you know, I think it's more important. So I don't know the answer to that question. Do you have a sense of that, Victor?
I don't know the number, but it amounted to roughly eighty thousand, maybe between eighty and ninety thousand dollars that it increased the budget for.
Okay.
For the three months.
For three months or twelve?
No, 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 that's an annual.
For the year.
Yeah, per year. When we developed it initially, we got that rough range in terms of COLA increase.
Okay.
Okay, so it's more like twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-five thousand?
Yep.
For the three months. Okay. And you're right. I mean, I understand all that. It's just that we can't do that with the contractual people. And they're getting not only COLA, but big step increases.
Unless there's a renegotiation of contracts, which I don't.
Well, at that point. That's true.
It took almost two years to negotiate the last school contract. I don't think, you know, Nathan and I do not want to relive that again, you know.
Yeah, I only highlight that because I believe that, you know, you know that the regional school, the high school is going through like a 112. They are going through some contractual negotiations right now. So I'm only making that note that that's what part of the things that perhaps they're talking about.
I, my feeling is that I think this is small enough money over the three months that people probably could absorb it at other places in their budget if they absolutely had to, and we weren't allowed to make allowances in the fall. So I would, I guess I would support, in the vein of fairness, is to go ahead and give these folks their COLAs this time, or at least with the new fiscal year.
I agree with Alan. You know, I, you know, I've talked with a few different people in town hall, and it seems like a lot of them are, you know, going above and beyond. You know, even though town hall wasn't open for a while, you know, there were folks that were still going in, still, you know, making things work, still having meetings. Where other towns shut down, Carlisle, as dinky as we are, we didn't. So, yeah, I'm supportive of the COLA now, you know. And, or the other option would be, we definitely, you know, implement it in the fall and make it retro. But, 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 you know, what's the difference, right? I mean, you know, because it's kind of what I stated at the last meeting, you know, if we're in such dire straits in the fall that, you know, we're talking about cutting ten thousand here, twenty thousand there, you know, we're going to be talking layoffs, we're going to be talking that sort of thing anyway. So, yeah, I think we do it now. And, you know, we just tell people, tighten the belts and, you know, because, yeah, we don't know what the fall is going to bring.
Yep.
I agree with that. I think it's reasonable to often include the COLA now for non-contractual employees.
Okay.
Done.
All right. So I'm changing this, this is what it's going to look like. So given the decision that you just made, COLA for non-contracted contractual employees will need to be offset by other budget reductions or within FY21.
Yeah.
Yeah, should, should we specify that it will be awarded, given what? I don't know what the proper term is, but just make it clear that they will get COLA, that they will get that 2%.
That's awarding work for that COLA will be effective, is it July 1st?
Yeah.
Yes.
It will be effective July 1st.
And then we'll need.
And will need to be offset by other budget reductions within departments. That's right. Right?
Yep. That apostrophe in the right spot.
Yep. All right. So that's what it will look like. And was there any other feedback on any of the rest of it? Because again, the way I wrote this up, and I kind of filled it out this way, it's joint between Board of Selectmen and College Finance Committee. So was there any other feedback on the rest of this?
It looked good to me.
Yeah, it looked okay.
All right. So what I'll do is I'll remove the highlight here, and then, Tim, I'll send this to you. You can communicate, you know, this to the departments.
Okay, thank you. Am I, can I raise my hand? I don't know how to do that.
Oh. You're going to have to learn, David.
I'm raising my hand, I'm raising my hand.
David, you go to the participants.
I got it, I got it, I raised my hand.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just want to chime in. So, you know, the biggest non-contractual labor force is on the school side.
Yes.
I'm not, I should know this, but I'm not sure we're offering any COLAs right now because we're trying to wrestle down Victor's 0% budget. So.
Your COLAs are contractual. So are you talking about for your non?
I'm talking about non-contractual, so maybe I missed it. Were you talking only contractual COLAs or non-contractual?
No, we're talking only non-contractual COLAs.
Only non-contractual, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
The non-contractuals are, I'm not sure where the school is on that budget we're formulating. So we're kind of in a box. If we, if you do it, then I think we got to look at that.
Right.
We are doing it, I don't know if you heard the beginning of it, David, but we are doing it as a matter of parity, because we don't think it's fair that if you have a contract, not only are you getting the COLA, but you're getting a step, and you're getting, you know, a lot of other things. And so we don't want to be balancing the budget on the backs of the non-contractuals, because they'll unionize if we do that.
I'm not, listen, I'm not, I'm certainly not forbating the, you know, merits of it. I'm just saying, this is good information, because I got to go back now and at least lobby for that on our side. I don't, we're in the process of formulating the budget response to the guideline that's a zero. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I got to make sure now that I know that, you know, okay, so we got to go back. Because I really, we like to keep not just the non-contractuals of the town comparable to the contractuals of the town, but the non-contractuals of the school comparable to the non-contractuals of the town.
Right, right. You know, I don't know about CPS, but I know the high school, I mean, everybody except for the secretaries, and there were like five people that were non-contractual on the staff, you know, because the bus drivers and the custodians and everything else were all, you know, unionized.
Yeah, well, they're going through their own, you know, challenge.
Yes, what I mean is.
Talking about one, tonight, they were talking about a small, I can't say in public meeting.
No, but if it's small numbers, it doesn't pay to really, you know, upset.
I know. Again, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just pointing out that we, you know, nothing's done in a vacuum, right? So we're trying to.
Yeah.
Balance everything. So I'm going to go back now to the school side and sort of say the same thing and see if we can make that work.
Yeah.
Just for information purposes for the Board of Selectmen, David, do you know how much that is? Because we reviewed that number just now, that COLA is like eighty thousand for the year. If you divide it by 12 and three months, it's not a whole lot for the budgets, for the departments to offset that. Do you know from a non-contractual?
How much is the non-contractual, like the COLA, like what a COLA would be? I got to go back. I can't do it off the top of my head. I mean, it's certainly not as much as the teachers', but it's not nothing. And I mean, we took your guidance the other night, and we're going on the assumption that this is a 12-month budget.
Yep.
Not that this is a three-month budget, right?
So. That's right. Go on this assumption that's 12.
You know, I would say, I mean, it's a, just ballpark, it's a 11 million, $12 million budget. Salaries generally are 70%, 7 million, so it's probably $2 million non-contractual payroll, I'm guessing. Maybe it's one, I don't, I don't want to guess. I'll get your number tomorrow, Victor.
Yeah. Well, I was highlighting that because part of the decision the Board has made was that it was reasonable for them to absorb that, right? And that's why I wanted to just check in from the school perspective.
You know, we'll do our, we'll do our best on the absorption part. I mean, we're trying to, as was publicly stated, and will be stated again later this week in our meeting, and in the hearing we're going to have next week, we're going to try to hold the class sizes because one of the things about, you know, the post-COVID world is the last thing you want to do is increase class sizes, because we probably. So we're going to hold the teachers having classes, which means we need pretty much all the teachers. We're looking for, you know, kind of a bucket of various concessions and cuts to essentially what amounts to a, you know, 3-plus percent decrease in what we plan on spending. So I can't really comment off on the fly. I'll just, I'll take it back, we'll work.
Watch you too.
Yep, good.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So that was all, that was the only item that I, that we had, that wanted to make sure we had that discussion.
Right. And thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, so I guess, do we have the agreement from the board that this should be a joint memo from the two of us, from the two boards?
Yeah.
Great, so send it.
Okay, I'll get rid of that highlight and I'll send it over to them.
Thank you. Right. Now the town administrators report, I guess.
Okay, yeah. The first item in my report, you'll see a letter that we received from Clean Harpers. Last week, we had an incident at the transfer station whereby our waste oil receptacle was contaminated by PCBs, and it was added to a larger container, and a yet larger container, and downstream, some 20,000 gallons of waste oil is contaminated. And they're looking to the town to pay for that cleanup, which I take it involves shipping it to Texas where it is incinerated, is my understanding. But I don't have too much more information on that except to tell you the town council is looking into this. But, you know, it's pretty clear that the contamination did come from the town because they sample every collection that they make. Unfortunately, the test results don't come back, I think, until it's been added to several other, you know, containers. So that's why it was such a large contamination. You can see that the estimated cleanup cost is significant. We do have resources that we could use if need be to deal with that, but it's, you know, not welcome news, obviously, but did want you to know about that and let you know the town council is looking into it on our behalf at the moment.
My big question was, if they bother to sample it, why don't they wait for the results before they start mixing it with huge, and mixing it twice? And why should we then be liable for their mixing it with some other oil? But we'll, I doubt we'll get very far with it, but I figured we should ask the question.
Very good. Also, my next item in the report has to do with the proposed Board of Health reorganization. You'll find an email from Linda Fantasia in the packet. You recall that, you know, this board and the finance committee both supported the Board of Health reorganization for fiscal '21 due to the current workload and pressures of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Board of Health would like to implement that reorganization this fiscal year. And the finance committee is supportive of this approach because there's not a net increase in the budget to doing it, you know, yet this fiscal year. So we said we would bring it to the board, you know, for your discussion and, you know, presumably approval, since, you know, this is a position that the board had supported. Adding to the budget, we thought, you know, July would be soon enough, but, you know, fate intervened, and, you know, the Board of Health's been working awfully hard these past several months and could, you know, use the relief frankly that this position would bring.
So.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the reorganization of the Board of Health according to the previously supported plan.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, Linda's on, I just have a quick question. I fully support this. It's just so, yeah, it addresses this individual, Chris Guines, Guines is, I think. It's just, so, yeah, it addresses this individual, Chris Guines, Guines, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah.
So this is the, this person's currently hired? Is that, I didn't really understand the flow of the, so are they, they're currently hired? The position wouldn't need to be posted, right? Because it's temporary, but.
Chris is already one of the part-timers that we have.
Oh.
She, so.
Okay, I didn't think she was, okay, okay, no, that's fine.
So this is just temporary. They will be posting the position just like any other position, but temporarily, they're going to increase her hours. The other person has already understood that she's going to be.
Relieved of duties, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just, I had never seen the name before, so that's where, that's where my confusion came from.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions? Are those in favor by rural call?
Arnold, I.
Oscar, little eye.
Louis, I.
We die.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on in my report, we've included the annual appointments this week just for informational purposes. This won't be on the agenda for your action until the next meeting, but I did want you to get a look at the list early on, so that'll be on the July, the June 23rd agenda, rather.
Yeah, it was on tonight's, I said, I don't think so.
Too little, too.
Sorry, 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 real quick, I know, I've just, I've been zoning out because I've been reading up on PCBs, right? Do you guys think it makes sense to put out just a notice in the mosquito or something? You know, I mean, you don't necessarily want to call people out or have this public shaming thing in terms of who dumped the PVC, PCBs. But, yeah, I mean, they come from semiconductors and, you know, hydraulic, well, see, it might be somebody who, yeah, used oil used in motors and hydraulic systems. So, I mean, it could be that the person didn't even know they were dumping it, but I, you know, I, like, you know, it's always just been a concern of mine with the transfer station. Like, I'm really shocked we don't get worse like this or asbestos or, you know, I mean, because it's, you know, Gary's guys do what they can in order to oversee this, but you can only do so much, right? So I, I don't know, it's just, yeah, it's a huge cost to the town for.
Oh, huge.
Somebody's oops, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and I'm not saying the person did it intentionally, but, yeah, I just, how do we, how do we prevent this from happening again? Sorry, not to backtrack, but maybe it's a conversation for another day, but, but no, that's why I was a little distracted. I'm reading up on the PCBs.
Um.
You know, transformers, because I've always known it to be in transformers, you know, and that sort of thing. So like, you know, in old ones, I mean, PCBs aren't even really around anymore, are they? But.
Well, Mary Lynn Bone is on, so maybe she'll put a little note in the mosquito or send a note to Betsy that maybe we need a little piece, thank you, on PCBs and not putting them in with the oil or. Yeah. Maybe, maybe what we need the guys to do, though, is have it locked. And if somebody wants to put oil in there, they have to get it unlocked and they have to show or tell what's in there.
Yeah.
We don't have this again. And then the other thing is we really should talk to Good Harbors and say,
Yeah.
we'll find another, I mean, you can't test and then mix it with, you know.
Yeah, right.
Before you get the results.
A bajillion gallons, yeah, right.
A bajillion gallons, and then we're the ones on the hook for it.
Right, right. You know, the joke of it is to get rid of it, they're probably going to incinerate it anyway. You know?
It is.
Now this is just work, right? So it's, no, but even just the waste oil, they probably just incinerate that too. I mean, that would be a.
Not in Texas, let's see, they.
Actually, they reuse the waste oil.
Oh, yeah.
They reprocess it for commercial fleets.
Oh, do they? Oh, okay. Probably, good, be good with PVC, P-C-B. Better thermal properties.
And PB and J as well.
Yeah, there you go. You know, I've tossed a few of those in the trash.
Oh, my God, I am so tired. Tim, anything else for us?
There are two sets of cemetery deeds. I did want to mention one other item that just came in yesterday. Part of that legislation that Wayne was talking about that allowed for the reduced quorum at town meeting, there's also a provision in there that allows cities and towns and school districts to pay for transportation services that they did not receive during the COVID pandemic. It allows them to essentially negotiate a rate with their bus companies. And in the town's case, with the same Bedford Charter that does the school buses, does our VOCAD transportation. And we will, in fact, have to pay for the period of March through June. This is special legislation that tries to make these providers whole because they, you know, had the vehicles, had the drivers, planned on transporting the students for the bulk of the, you know, the balance of the school year. This legislation allows them to get paid for those services that were not rendered officially. So I know our school department is negotiating a discount on the rate with Bedford Charter. I would ask if the board would allow us to basically pay the same discounted rate to Bedford Charter. As it turns out, we will have to pay them something for that period of time and, you know, subject to agreement with the provider and.
I want to just ensure that they don't get paid twice because if they, they should have applied for PPP and I don't want to pay that amount.
Certainly, yeah, no, we do want to make sure.
Amount is minus the PPP that they received.
Mm-hmm.
At the very least, or very most.
Is that clear in the provision, this new provision?
I don't, I don't know if that's in the.
Yeah.
In the text of the statute, but, yeah, certainly, we'll make sure that they're not, they're not making out better than they would have under normal circumstances.
And on the other hand, if they did not get PPP, I would certainly be asking the question, why? Didn't you get the PPP?
Right, right. And the new law requires a vote of the selectmen, a vote of the school committee and the approval of the town accountant to make any payments to these transportation providers. So we can, we can bring the number back to you after Priscilla, you know, has worked on it a bit, but I did want you to know that that was something that would be coming fairly soon.
Okay.
Well, good news tonight.
Yeah, more good, more good news. And now on to the cemetery deeds.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to 124 Woodridge Road at Green Cemetery Lot, D112 Graves 1 and 2.
Second. Okay. Rural call vote, please.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, little eye.
Louis, I.
We die.
And, okay, I've signed it.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Meredith and Darrell along the 69 Fern Street at Green Cemetery Lot, D114 Graves 1 and 2.
Luke, you seconded it?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard a second and I wasn't sure. Rural call vote, please.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, little eye.
Louis, I.
Reed, I.
Okay, and then I show the proposed agendas for the next two meetings, going back to our twice monthly meeting schedule and then the dates of the remaining summer meetings, July 28th and August 11th and 25th. If, for some reason, you are going somewhere on vacation and won't be available for those meetings, please let me know. And I think that's all I've got in my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
What's a vacation?
Yeah.
Don't remember.
Lee is on reports. The only thing I have is, you know, municipal facilities continues to meet. Things continue to break and we're continuing to put them together with joint them, so.
Well, the only one I had was the town, the town meeting committee has met and you heard the report tonight for that already, so.
Oh, and I was on a, well, actually, I missed it because they forgot to send me the link, but I'm on the, on the back-to-school task force and on the, anyway, I'll have more to report about that next week when I finally attend a meeting. They sent it to Kay, Kim, Kim Reed.
Oh.
Who was on staff there, so.
I did attend the meeting this week and it's, all the subcommittees met this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had the, the meeting with Allied Paving on Monday. So Lee Storres was there, Bill, both chiefs, Tim, myself, Matt, I never know how to pronounce his last name from Nitch, a couple of guys from Allied. Yeah, so, long story short, you know, and Tim, you can feel free to interject anything that I missed. But, you know, I think it was a good meeting, you know, they were, they were fairly positive in the respect that they really don't think that traffic in the road area is going to be disrupted that much. They think it's wide enough. They fully expect to have all lanes open, right? If I'm correct then. You know, because a lot of the work is going to be done along the edge. So, yeah, hopefully, and they're ready to get rolling. So hopefully, staging is going to be a bit difficult. Where are they going to put all the curbing and such? And the pavers, but, but we'll figure that out. But, but good meeting, you know, I think everybody's ready to roll.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just checking to see if there's any leftover chats or anything that we've missed. I don't think I see any. Barney? I wonder if you were going to push a button or if.
I just want to publicly apologize to the board for my earlier comments when we were talking about the deer hunt and specifically, you know, asking Alan and Luke, particularly Luke, to, and I just, it was inappropriate and I apologize. I meant no disrespect, it was just a mistake on my part, so. And Luke, I'll talk to you later too.
Yeah, no, thank you, Barney. You know, that's the thing, I mean, tensions are going to flare and I think everybody's a little tense with COVID. You know, I mean, I've always thought our relationship was great and, you know, actually, I meant to reach out to you earlier this week just to chat, but, you know, as busy as one can get in COVID, I've been pretty busy. But, but no, you know, I did, you know, we both said what we said, we'll move on. I mean, that's what we do.
Yeah, well, I, as I say, I wanted to publicly acknowledge.
No, thank you.
That was my error in judgment and I apologize for that.
Thanks, Barney.
Thank you, Barney. Anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Great, I've got a Scotch win.
Second.
I don't know, I need it.
Do you Thursday morning?
Yes.
A week from.
A week from Thursday. One of those Thursdays.
Yes, I've got it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you for, you know, it is a tough time.
Yeah.
It is, tensions are high everywhere and this was a very tough meeting.
Yeah.
And it is hard to hear all those concerns and I appreciate everybody's concerns, you know, but.
Yeah.
And I hope that, I hope that the public, though, on the other hand, appreciates this, our, our job and how hard our job is to balance all the concerns on all the sides for the entire time and try to steer a course, not hitting too many shoals through some of this so that we can get to the other side and have the right, make the right decisions for the town. And it's not always easy and.
No, I.
For all of you, the best job.
No, and I think it's important too that, you know, people come to meetings when it's not just a vote night, you know? And because I, you know, I honestly, I thought this was, you know, we had some really great speakers tonight, you know? I mean, it was just, and folks that we haven't heard from before. It's, you know, and I just, I wish more folks would get involved earlier because to try to make these decisions last minute, it just, that's when things go awry, you know? It's, and, you know, I think, you know, everybody that's worked with David on stuff knows that, Jesus, the man starts a year in advance building consensus and, you know, and unfortunately, we can't have David on every committee. But, but, you know, I think in a situation like this, you know, we did it with dogs and I think we're still going through with deer. But, you know, we really just need to get, you know, I mean, we have that very dedicated core group who are opposed, but, you know, I think just getting the word out that, you know, everybody should come to these and, or just even send an email so it can be discussed. You know, so we can truly have that thoughtful discussion.
Yeah, on the other hand, we also have to take responsibility when it's our responsibility. And, you know, worldwide, frankly, a worldwide poll or survey or whatever doesn't cut it for me because I'm trying to make the best decision for the town in certain respects and it's, and it's not factual.
Yeah, no, I, well, with that whole thing. Yeah, with that whole thing, I don't think they realize the way that it works. You know, they did break it out, I mean, it wasn't our packet which individuals were.
Yeah, but, but again, that wasn't, that wasn't then a question of fact, it was a question, you know, of emotion and we can't really necessarily deal with all of that, but we.
No, but if we have a dedicated few that actually show up and are willing to have that discussion, right? That's all we need, you know, I mean, it's like a meeting, right? You know, you get 200 people and it's, they all sit in the same seats every year.
Yeah. And I hope I gave them enough of a forum. I tried to set it up so that everybody.
I think you did, I mean, I think there was time left and that wasn't used, you know, and.
Yeah, I just wanted to go forever, you know.
Yeah, no, you're right, right.
You know, I wanted to make sure it was circumscribed to a certain extent, but I wanted everybody to have a chance to say something if they wanted to. So that's kind of a hard balance right there, so that, I'm tired from just.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like riding a unicycle, you know? It's just.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're all trying to do the best we can, right?
You still have to vote, you want to.
Vote to adjourn?
I guess you're already home.
We just have to shut up, that's all. We have to vote.
We haven't talked enough tonight.
Well, sometimes it is nice for us to be able to kind of decompress and debrief after a meeting, especially one as intense as this. And if there were things that I did or said that, you know, you didn't think were productive towards moving things forward, I was hoping to come to some decision that we had, could come to some agreement on something, you know, so that we wouldn't have to do this again, but obviously, I failed in that.
It wasn't your failure, it's the tough, it's a, you know, it's a difficult.
Yeah, because we, yeah, so. And I was trying to force us into making some decision as, you know, to, well, you know, yes or no for hunt at all, you know, much less expand it, you know? But anyway. All right, my dears, rural call vote, let's just.
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I.
All right.
Hi.
Thank you.
Bye.